We think we have our technical difficulties somewhat fixed. So from what I understand is you won't see the scrolling if you're on sudden link where it says the the phone number to call if you want to be part of the meeting, but if you go to the county website, you will be able to join us. So on the it's called Granicus system. So give that a try. So with that, I'm gonna call the meeting to order of Thursday, December 16th, 2021. And sorry for the delays in accordance with AB 361. The planning commission meeting will be held virtually until further notice. So with that, I will call the meeting to order and ask you to join me in a salute to the flag.
Undergo indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Laura, roll call, please.
Alan Bonjio.
Yes.
Thomas Mulder. Noah Levy.
Here.
Mike Newman.
Present.
Peggy O'Neil.
Yes.
Brian Mitchell.
Said he might not be here.
Melanie McAver.
Yes.
All right, so we have a quorum. We have five of our seven. So the first item that is up is the discussion of remote meetings or continuing the.
The remote meetings. Yes, the there is a resolution before you to continue to meet remotely until February. Or I'm sorry, till January 15th of 2022, which basically covers the first meeting in January. The board on Tuesday decided that they would not go back in person. Until such a time as the equipment was available to have hybrid meetings that would allow both in-person meetings and also people to attend remotely, that equipment is not ready yet. And so I would recommend to the planning commission that you pursue similar course and choose not to meet in person until such a time as we can hold hybrid meetings, which allows in-person and remote attendance. And the way you would do that tonight is simply to adopt the resolution that's been put before you.
Hey, anybody who'd like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
All second.
And thank you, Mike. So we have first and second. Any discussion? Okay, Laura, roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Alan Bonjio.
Yes.
Tom, oh, Noah Levy.
Yes.
Mike Newman.
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil.
Yes.
Right, motion carries five zero. Director, do we have any agenda modifications tonight?
Oh, we do. We've got a couple of items that have been are being continued and then an item that's being withdrawn. So we're gonna go down to item K four to start with, which is the H two Equity LLC. It is recommended that this be continued to a date uncertain. And then moving to item H nine. We're recommending that this also be continued to a date uncertain to allow staff to get some things clarified with the applicant and hold a community meeting. And then item K eight Cannabalt, the applicant has submitted a letter requesting withdrawal of this application, so no actions needed on this tonight.
All right, so why don't we take care of those two that have been continued to a date uncertain and get that taken care of? So I can get a move on to item number eight and it was four. Yes, items so items number four and number eight to a date uncertain.
It's actually number nine.
Or I'm I'm sorry, Mike. Yeah, K four.
K four and K nine.
Yeah, yes, that is correct. It is four and nine. So can I get a?
Also motion to date uncertain.
Thank you, Melanie. Any other discussion on this? Okay, Laura.
Before you vote, you should allow the public to speak to the continuance.
Yeah, okay, okay. So open this up for public comment. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on either one of these items?
Just as in terms of the continuance.
In terms of the continuance. So I've got five hands up, so.
Most of those have been up the whole time.
So if you aren't wanting to speak about the continuance on these two items, then take your hand down, please. Okay, I'm gonna go with the first one then. Sarah Atkins, go ahead. There, Sarah, star six to unmute. Okay, I'm gonna move on to the next one. Public 7429.
Yes, hi, this is Robi Tenorio. I have a question. In reading the staff reports on K four and K nine, I read that the projects were the staff recommended denial. So I'm wondering why they would be put to a date uncertain or a holding to another date.
The reason we're recommending continuances, some additional information has been submitted that we want to get clarified before we bring this forward to the commission. We want to be able to give clear guidance before the commission has to sort through the details.
Thank you for that explanation.
Right, thank you. Next is public 7454.
And Swawski, I do have a point of order before I make my comments on the continuance. I we're flying blind here, the public. Your Granicus is a black screen, current agenda item, agenda modifications. We have no access to channel 10. This meeting, in my opinion, should be continued to a date uncertain because of technology. You started off the meeting with 17 minutes of dead air and a lot of people probably gave up and dropped off the process. I think it would be appropriate to continue this meeting to another time. I'd like to see it happen, but I don't think it's fair to the public to work flying blind. We can't see any of your reports. We can't see anything we normally have access to by sitting in the room. And that's a major disadvantage, but you decide to continue, that's your decision. So now I will make my comment on the continuance is I I understand other things coming in. I guess it must be major. We were looking forward to not continuing those and going ahead and dealing with those and to a date uncertain, to a date uncertain, or can we can we have a certain date at least? So it'd be sure nice to have a date certain, you have the information in hand. You should be able to schedule that for another meeting to attend. So I would recommend if you're gonna schedule it, use we schedule it to a date certain rather than a date uncertain. They give my opportunity to speak. And again, I I think you're having enough technology problems where this is a non-functional meeting without lack of ability for the public to participate. I had my hand up on the prior topic and it was not recognized. So I was precluded from making comment there. Fortunately, I get to make it at this time. I would have made the same comments before regarding your lack of transparency and lack of functionality. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you. You want to?
Sure. Thank you. We are monitoring Granicus and Granicus is currently up. And I did just receive a text from somebody who is watching on Granicus and it is not a black screen. And I just received another text saying that Granicus is working on channel 11. So, thank you.
All right. Well, with that, we're gonna keep moving because this is gonna be recorded. So at the worst case scenario, it could be you at another time on access humble after they transcribe it or whatever they do from Zoom. So, okay, next caller is Kim. Go ahead. Star six.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Yes, um, our community has been dealing with the property. I'm sorry, I don't have an agenda in front of me, so I don't know which number we're talking about. But we are talking about the H two LLC and.
We're items four and nine.
She's she's talking about four.
It's called.
So item four.
Yes.
We have been dealing with this property in our community for quite a while, and it gets pretty frustrating. This is the second planning commission meeting we've attended, which we actually felt kind of fascinating. But besides that, it it's difficult to gather people in our community to come and speak publicly. And this is the second one that we've attended and.
Where it's been continued.
Where it's been continued to another time. And I understand from just hearing and from something I was spoken about before, that they're actually talking about having a community meeting about this. I think our community has spoken pretty strongly. There are 16 letters saying we do not want this project to go forward. This is a small community and we're pretty strong about we don't want it. And I'm.
This is Kevin Church. I'm with Kim. I'm her husband. I'm also a licensed civil engineer in the state of California, license number 61822. Just for background, I've got 24 years with the Department of Transportation, Caltrans, and previous experience as a consulting engineer before that. I brought a complaint to the planning department several years ago on this piece of property. The disturbance that took place there in an unpermitted fashion is the worst and most egregious from an environmental impacts perspective of any grow I've seen. I'm sure there's worse.
We're only talking about moving this to a date uncertain. We're not talking about the project tonight, so.
I understand that, but my point is that without a date that the community can schedule to make sure that they're available to comment on something that's continued for more than a decade is the relevant point here. So if we can get this scheduled so we can ensure appropriate environmental comment by the community, that would be helpful.
All right, thank you.
So one of the things I could share is is that it is within discretion of the planning commission to not continue this tonight and to conduct this public hearing. I I mean, I I don't, I am sympathetic to the concerns of the public. But we can sort through things when we get to it.
Did the applicant ask to have this continued?
Oh, yes.
So if the applicant asked, that's to me, they they have the right to do that. They paid the money to go through the process and everything. They should be able to pull their item. Do you agree, Director?
Um, I I think that deserves consideration, but I do believe the public deserves consideration as well.
All right, well, let's hear the other people's comments and then I'll ask the commission what they want to do on it after we've heard there's two more people, like it looks like. So Mary, I don't even want to try the last name. I apologize. Go ahead.
That's all right. It's Balagiosian.
Sorry. Yes.
Um, yes, I'm here on behalf of the applicant and just to make some things clear. The reason why we're asking for the continuance is that we've had a lengthy meeting with the board yesterday and we did provide additional documents for their consideration. And we did make the request to continue the this hearing or, you know, our our item on the specifically on the agenda so that the board can take time and analyze those that information. Other than that, I understand the community's concern as far as as not being a certain date set. The fact that there isn't a date set doesn't mean it's gonna go on indefinitely or a year from now. The next, this can be back next agenda hearing. So as long as we have the opportunity to have the board look over the planning commission, look over the the new information provided and for us to be able to continue with the community outreach and all of that, I think it's good to consider the opportunity to give us the opportunity to go through those steps before putting this up for on the agenda today. So yes, other than that, I also noticed that there's some something in the staff report that we found some inconsistencies that are also worth mentioning. I think we're gonna bring it up to the the reporting people where would like to get it corrected before it's 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 made public as as correct. So there is some inconsistencies that we would like to correct before then, before this item is heard. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Next caller is James Hoekstra. Star six to mute.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, I raised my hand earlier because I just have a difficulty getting in, but I'm fine right now. I appreciate it. I am gonna lower my hand. I thought I already did. I apologize.
So you don't want to speak?
No, I'm all set.
Thank you. Public 8720. Star six to mute.
Hi, sorry. We're wondering how soon we're gonna be able to see what this additional information is being submitted by the applicant. We've been waiting for six months and suddenly they have new information once you've recommended a denial, which sounds pretty suspect to me. They have, I don't see how they can undo the tree, the illegal tree cutting that they did. And what new information is this and how soon is the public gonna be apprised of it? And I'm talking about number nine, Humboldt Empire.
Okay, thank you. The next one, seven caller is public 7108.
Hi, yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Bonnie.
Okay, um, there were four items that said that staff was recommending denial, but it turns out that they're not really recommending denial. They're just recommending continuing it to some other day. Yeah, so I'm just wondering, yeah, the last caller, what was the new information that changed all these things on item number nine? Thank you.
And the last caller is 2122.
Good evening, everyone. You're right, Rascal. You know, this time uncertain is is kind of an issue. I I recall a permit that had that time, you know, continues a time to a time uncertain that's well over four years ago, maybe even five by now. I'd have to look at my records. So I guess a question for Director Port is is how long can a continuance go on uncertain? And the other point I'd like to make is it there it really is a problem. You know, we can't access the information that is presented on the county's website. I don't have channel 10 or 11 or whatever it is on my TV. So I I really have no idea what documents are being provided. So anyway, the time uncertain thing is is an issue I would like to address if possible. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, I'm gonna close the public hearing. I'm gonna bring this back to the commission and get what they want to do with these two items. They want to continue them as staff is asking for, or if they want to hear them tonight and go on. So anybody have a feeling on that?
I have a question, I think, of staff as to whether or not the information that has just arrived is substantial enough to really sway staff to, you know, change their request to deny.
So relative to item number H four. The information there has to do with some of the violations that we were looking at was cultivating without state state licenses. We did receive some information today that while they did not have a county permit, they did have state may have had state licenses and that, you know, could be considered an honest mistake. I think it's worth verifying whether or not that is the case and presenting the commission with that information with confirmation from the state. We also do recognize that they were trucking water and there is a disagreement on how much water is being trucked. And we want to try to attempt to understand that a little bit better before the commission tries to wade through murky facts. Relative to Humboldt Empire Farms, the site plan, and I apologize for this, the site plan that was in the staff report is not the most recent site plan. We, the staff of the planning and building department told the applicant they could not put greenhouses where there were trees. They redesigned the site to put the greenhouses where there were no trees. So basically, you're going to be responding tonight to a site plan that's inaccurate. It's not the most recent site plan, and that's not fair to the applicant or to the commission to try to wade through that.
Okay. And Director, could you answer? I think it was the last caller or maybe the one before. What is the is the law or the the rule on?
So the fundamental law is the Permit Streamlining Act, which has certain limitations in terms of processing time. Those can be waived or modified or extended with the consent of the applicant. Currently, the applicants are requesting a continuance.
That's how I thought it was as well. So that's why I asked that. Okay. So with that, do we want to hear these tonight or do we want to do what staff is asking and continue them to a date uncertain at this point?
I just have one further question about the H two equity one is that's the one that you said that they they may have already had state licenses. Did they provide those state licenses? Or is this just information that's, you know?
They provided us an email today or late yesterday that there was an agreement with how the licenses would continue on and they identified licenses. My concern is we have not had time to verify whether or not those licenses apply to this site and then were actually valid during that this time. So again, we're dealing with inadequate facts.
But they didn't provide copies of the licenses and the duration of the license is just an email?
That is correct. Well, from their attorney, that is correct.
So what's the the feeling of the commission? We got a lot of.
You've got a lot of hands up, Alan.
Oh, I didn't even look over there. I just thought somebody would say something. Okay, go ahead, Melanie, you're first.
Thank you through the chair. I actually have a different question, but I think it's relevant. It concerns the public access to this meeting. I just, I'm wondering if the director or somebody perhaps from tech could update us in terms of what the previous caller said about not being able to access it unless you have a television.
So no, that's not correct. The this meeting is fully accessible through the county system. If you go to the county site where the agenda is identified and hit watch live meeting, that is completely on, that's completely functional. If you go to channel 11 with access humble, that is completely on, that is completely functional. In fact, my wife sent me a picture of of the meeting with the the bar showing the call in numbers on it. It is currently working.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. I just didn't want us to move on anything until that was clarified. Thank you.
You, Mike Newman, your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I have two questions. Number one, for either of these two items, H two equity or Humboldt Empire Farms, have they been continued in the past?
I'm gonna, I think I see Mr. Johnson nodding. He said, yes, they have.
Which one and how many times or how long has it been?
If you want to answer that.
Sure. Thanks to the chair, the so the item H four or.
Which is H two.
Two equity was on the agenda a couple of months ago. And at that time, I believe we actually were recommending approval and it was continued to dig into some of the information that we received from members of the public. The other item, and I think that's H, that's item I eight or H time. Empire Farms is. Empire Farms was on the agenda back in June and was and again, at that time, staff was recommending approval. We were made aware of information from the public that we wanted to look into and it was continued to a date uncertain.
Okay, so my second question then is can we put a date on these? Is there a projected date that we could possibly put on them? And they don't have to be the same date for both.
Get easy, though.
Yeah, I would recommend that we continue them both to January 20th.
Okay. So I'll amend my motion then to instead of a date uncertain to January 20th.
On both of them?
Yes.
Okay. There's a second. We had a second. So is the second okay with that? I think it was Melanie, yes.
Agreed.
Okay. There's one more hand up still, so I'm gonna let Thomas speak and then we'll move on with that motion.
So just for clarification, the phone call in was working. I was listening to the meeting, the dead air and most of the meeting, and then I dropped off about five minutes before I actually logged on. So that was working and it was because of my cell service I dropped off. As far as the H two equity, I had a question. There was mention of the possibility of the applicant having state licenses, but if I remember reading everything, there was it was raided by law enforcement, not once, but twice. In my understanding, if there's an active state license, there cannot be a warrant issued for basically eradicating cannabis because there has been other, from my knowledge, there's been other places that had law enforcement show up, but because they had active state licenses, there was not eradication of the cannabis, so.
Think largely that is true. In this particular case, there's some uncertainty because there was not a local permit. was not a local permit. And so um it's one of those difficult areas where if there was a state license but not a local permit, you know, why do we hold the can applicant or the cultivator accountable for? And, and that's some of the things we'd like to sort out um to help bring clarity to the discussion.
Okay, and then a follow up, is that site active with via an interim permit at the current moment?
Yes.
Okay. That troubles me.
There is some history there that we would also like to bring from.
All right, so we have a motion and we have a second to continue it to the, a date certain now, both item four and item nine to a date certain of January 20th. Is there any further discussion on this? See you none. I'll ask Laura for a roll call vote.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Melanie McCaver?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
I'm a new.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
All right, motion carries unanimous to move it to the January 20th. All right, so now we're going to get back to um agenda modifications. And I've asked the director because we're not going to get through everything tonight, I don't believe with uh what I see. And so I want to move item L up, the cannabis discussion letter to the beginning, right after we do uh election of chair and vice chair. That way we get that done. Uh, the director says he's gonna do edits right there and we're gonna be done with that process and get it off to the supervisors. So um that'll be the, the only other modification that I know of unless you've got anything else, director. All right. So with that, I now will open a public comment on non-agenda items. And see what we have. Uh, two, one, two, two, public, two, one, two, two.
Uh, yeah, hi, you're right, Driscoll again. Um, I've, I've been having some difficulty with um uh a, the city of Arcata has uh applied for a permit for a project that they already completed. They, it's, it would encroach upon a, the county road in my neighborhood. And I have been trying to work with um Public Works on this, but they seem to be extremely evasive about whether such a project could be completed while it's uh has a restraining order on it. Now, this project, much like some of these marijuana projects I'm hearing about, now has already been started. They cut down a hundred year old tree and dropped it onto a domestic water system and yet they're applying for a seemingly a myster- uh ministerial permit. Oh, an over the counter permit and I, and I, I've just, there's so many sequoia concerns, there's legal concerns and I've reached out to Director Foul Ford to try to get some clarity on this and hopefully he'll be able to get back to me here shortly. Um, but this is just, it's, it's very disturbing when you can provide all the information, have to go through litigation and, and still have a permit being considered that could have so many unaddressed impacts. So there's that. The, the other thing that really is, is an issue and I'm all for trails. I've contributed to them, I've built them and all that, but I think what and this has happened at the planning commission, the last meeting I chimed in on, where the um, there's issues with the Bay Trail project that are not being addressed by staff. And while you guys did raise some questions, you're not getting all the complete answers and there's not really a way to provide you with those answers. The public does have some significant information and there needs to make, we need to make sure that there is a way to get that to you guys as decision makers, because I think that you guys all do want to make the right decisions. But there's a problem in this process that is not allowing for that. And that is over trusting staff. Um, now I, I'm not gonna pick on any one person or any two or three people, that's not fair, but there needs to be some correction in that process so that these projects can be done in a, in a, in the right way, which uh is what our county deserves. So thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Uri. Uh, public seven, four, five, four.
Hello, Kent Swatki. I wanted to uh thank John Ford. Uh, he had the zoning administrator meeting today and I made a request that two projects be brought to you folks. I wanted to give you an update. There were only three projects on there. Uh, one was for a well permit and as soon as I found out this wasn't a, a permit before another cannabis process and it sounded legit, I didn't have problems. Even on that well permit, I think, you know, people should be encouraged to use them and do forbearance no matter what they use. This was for, I think, a residence and to uh take care of horse watering. Uh, so I'm not, I'm not just picking on one particular group or anything. I think that needs to happen on, on all permits that are issued on wells. Uh, there, there were two large permits which will be coming before you. Thank you, John. One was for a, I think a one acre and the other one was an acre and a half. Uh, one of them had a whole bunch of generates and unfortunately, it's my perception that a bunch of those permits have gone through without having oversight until Bonnie Blackberry and a few other people started attending the zoning administrative meeting. So I'm gonna be asking for the administrative record for all of the uh, all the permits unfortunately that have happened through the zoning administrator's process and uh that uh will be, be interesting. I hate to have to do that and burden staff with additional information, but we need transparency. The other thing I wish to address was, you know, I, I wish to address the item where there was an accusation of um conflict of interest with your commissioner, Melanie there. And uh, that was a little embarrassing. I have a public records request in to see allegedly some constituents reported this to staff and then the staff decided to bring that to supervisors, county staff for some reason. It wasn't a supervisor allegedly attached it. So we kind of need to get to the bottom of that, you know, what does it take? If three of us call in and decide we want to have uh, you know, other people uh brought before the board of supervisors, uh, even if they're not at large, they still could be brought before the board of supervisors for conflict of interest and sanctioned and admonished. And so it's gonna be real interesting how that process works and of course, that also puts the supervisors in those sites. So do three people come forward just to county staff? And are there, are the, is that forced to be put on agenda? And then a conflict of interest be scrutinized. I strongly support uh changes. I asked Assemblyman Wood when he was up to change conflict of interest and clarify that and kind of tune it up because we seem to have really major problems in Humboldt County. So I hope, hope you all, if you do have a conflict, do uh, do the right thing if you're a consultant uh and in, in the business. And uh, you should be divulging that and especially if any of these projects, I guess if you're a consultant, some of them are coming forward, otherwise you're not making any money as a consultant. But anyway, conflict of interest is coming to heart. We will be doing public records requests and hopefully that will not lead to litigation. Uh, we'd rather avoid that at all costs. Thank you very much for your opportunity to speak today.
Thank you. Uh, next caller, Stephen Lou. Go ahead, Stephen.
Hello, I'm just uh making a comment regarding um what I perceive is um ongoing the strife regarding conditioning 1.0 permits to meet 2.0 standards. I've submitted a um, a document that was published by the, pulling it up right now. Uh, the League of California Cities, it is a sequel guidance document that outlines um the, the discretion a dis- uh, decision-making body has uh versus SEQA statute as well as state law. And I wanted to read into the record um because this um, you know, for the public to understand that SEQA provides no separate grant of authority to require project changes or to allow project denials in the name of environmental protection beyond the authority and discretion, other non-SEQA laws afford an agency. So for example, um, you know, there could be concerns about seismic risk and a, a condition could be to get a geological assessment and to have an engineer design a structure to meet California building code. But a deciding body may not, it would be an overreach for a body to tell an applicant to put twice as much steel in a structure as is necessary. And to further uh expound on that, um, the document concludes that SEQA practitioners should not jump to the conclusion that an agency has discretion to deny or condition a project based on any or all issues and potential or any potential environmental impact cognizable under SEQA simply because the agency approval involves some discretionary aspects. The discretion must be of the type that allows the agency to meaningfully address the specific impacts of concern. And the basis of all these laws and regulations has to be tied to state and local law. That could be California building code, that could be the war general order for cannabis. If, as we're speaking regarding cannabis 1.0 versus 2.0 projects, and it falls down to what is the written law and for 1.0 applicants, that law is the 1.0 ordinance. And so I just wanted to point out that this is a guidance document and I hope this gives some reference to this ongoing discussion about what is enforceable, what SEQA statute allows for conditions of projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller is public seven, one, zero, eight. Go ahead.
Hi, um, I wanted to talk a little bit about the zoning administrator meetings, which the last seventeen, uh, there's no action summary. So anybody that wants to go and find out what happened and maybe there's two videos of. Um, so the zoning administrator is um approving a lot of these large uh cannabis operations. And I don't know if the planning commissioners have any idea what's happening. They, they could be approving one in the morning in the same watershed uh, an area that you are going to be approving or not. And you don't really know what's already been done. And I kept the map uh that Melanie's been asking for. I'm hoping they would show have that information on. So um, yeah, and uh it seems like things are moving so fast that the, the uh clerk staff can't keep up with getting the action summaries uh out in a timely manner. So I encourage them uh looking into that uh whether they need a bigger budget and some more employees to help catch up uh or maybe slow down and give them time to get their paperwork in order. So thanks for listening.
Thank you, Bonnie. Anybody else who wants to speak on non-agenda items? See you none. I'm gonna close the public comment and uh come back and we're gonna do the cons, item F, the consent agenda. Um, there's one item on consent. It's county of Humboldt McKinleyville area, a general plan conformance review for M C S D to purchase 550 acres of timberland for a future community forest.
I'd make a motion to approve consent there, Chair, and then also I disclose to you and uh the director, but I'm not in Humboldt County participating, participating, but I think electronically I'm still good.
Nope, good picture. All right, we have a motion to accept the consent. Is there a second?
Yep.
Okay, thanks, Noah. Any further discussion on it? All right, Laura, roll call vote, please.
Noah Levy?
Yeah, I guess.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Melanie McCaver?
Yes.
Alan Bongio?
Yes. All right, motion carries unanimous. All right, so that brings us to item H, which is new business and election of chair and vice chair for 2022. So in the past.
Sheriff, one of the things we did not do is take public comment on the consent calendar.
Uh, we usually didn't. Because it's usually something that's miniscule and we do it, that's why. If you, if you want me to go back, I'll open it up. That's been the practice, so I, I thought that's what I, what we were doing.
Think I was reliving a board meeting.
Yep. Okay, sounds good. Sorry about that. Um, so we're on election of chair and vice chair. So usually we just have some discussion, somebody throws some ideas out there. So hopefully we can get through this fast because we have a lot to get to.
Um, just a point of order, just real quick. Um, did we ask on the consent agenda if there was anybody in the public wanting to pull that off?
No.
And that's why we usually do add a board meeting in person.
Not on consent, but on.
On, on consent. That's why we started putting many of these off of consent because most of them were full.
The, the practice, the traditional practice, Commissioner Newman is correct, has been to poll the commissioners and poll the public to see if there's anybody who would like to discuss the items.
Like me to go back?
Yes, please.
Okay, let's just go back. I'll open up the public comment on the consent item, which is the McKinleyville General Plan Conformance Review. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item? Or to have this item pulled? This would be how we did it in the past. See you none, I'll close it. We've already had the vote, so I don't see any reason to go through that again. All right. I'm sorry, it's been, I, we haven't been doing many that are consent, but I thought that that's what we had decided on consent was that how we were gonna do them because they're usually things that are just, you know, ministerial and that kind of thing. So anyhow. So item H, election of chair and vice chair. Any thoughts?
Well, I would, I would move um for um you to continue uh as the chair. I would make that motion.
I'll second it.
What I thought I was gonna hear. Okay. Uh, any discussion on that?
Like Noah has some.
Noah, go ahead.
I just wanted to make the point that um you've had to do uh an extraordinary job this year in the, being the chair. It's, it's not just the normal duties of a chair. You've had to be a pandemic chair and that has involved a lot of um extra jumping through hoops and so forth. And I just really appreciate the, the way that you've handled it. I think you've, you've learned well how to handle the technology and I would support Alan continuing to be the chair of this body.
I would agree with that, Commissioner.
Right. Thank you, everyone. Um, do we want to do vice chair in this? So it's one motion, so uh would somebody like to, with the, Mike, would you like to pick a vice chair since you'd pick the? Yeah, or does anybody want to chime in who should be vice chair?
Well, I think we should just continue as it is. Um, Noah is a good backup there, I believe, and and I don't see any problem with um keeping him on if he wants to do that.
Good with that, Noah?
Thank you. I am willing to remain as vice chair. He, Alan has not given me a whole lot of chance to step in as chair, but I know it's gonna happen one of these days.
I'll gladly let you run one. Just say when you want. All right. So any further discussion on that? Um, should we open this for public comment?
Yeah.
Oh, uh, yeah, Peggy, would you like to modify your second?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second there that's good. And I'm just, to be safe, I'm gonna open up public comment on it. It looks like there's one hand that's, looks like Mr. Swatki, so go ahead, Kent.
Well, I, I uh back Virginia continuing chair because she did a good job. I also back Alan. I don't think you could get a more capable chair. I also back Alan. I don't think you could get a more capable chair. Alan, you must have been really bad in a prior life to get stuck with this time and time again. And you should, you deserve hazard pay. I would like to add a motion that or a rider, but I guess I can't. It's your double is pay for having to put up with the public and what we can do in here and doing a wonderful job. So thank you very much for your service, Alan, and I look forward to your continued service if you're willing to continue.
I am. Thank you, Kent. I appreciate that. Anybody else that'd like to speak on this item? See you none, I'll close it and bring it back for a vote. So Laura, roll call vote.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Melanie McCaver?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
You there, Thomas?
I thought I said yes, and you didn't say yes.
Now you're clear. It just wasn't. Thank you.
Alan Boncio?
I'm going to abstain. I'm not going to vote on myself.
And Peggy O'New?
Yes.
All right, motion carries six or five one, yes, or five with an extension. So our new chair will be Alan Boncio and our new vice chair will be Noah Levy. Thank you, everyone. We move on to item number I, continued public hearings and.
I thought you wanted to go to the letter.
Oh, you're right. Thank you, directors.
Yeah, I was trying to get there.
Wow, thank you. I almost blew that one. Still moved by being voted back in. So we all have a copy of the letter that we were going to send to the Board of Supervisors and Chair Bass. Like to hear if everybody's okay with that or if there's additions that we'd like to add or change. So let me get to thoughts. Melanie, you have your hand up and then Peggy.
Yes, through the chair. You probably can guess that I'm going to bring up the maps. I know that they've been promised, but I'm wondering if we want to include those in our formal letter. And I'd also like to ask what the approximate date will be, when we can get those. And I also just wanted to say a little bit about the cumulative effects assessment. You know, once we get all of these maps to show the past, present, and reasonable foreseeable projects, it's important to keep in mind that it's not just the density of projects. It's, you know, a little bit deeper than that. It goes back to the idea of the environmental setting, which is the most important aspect under the CEQA. So for every project, for example, you have multiple actions. Each of those actions has effects. Some of those actions have multiple effects. But what cumulative effect looks, to use a forestry example, you might have the action of bringing a delimmer through a forest, a plantation, for example, and that can compact the soil. And that soil compaction for a long time and still is is considered a negative under many circumstances. And that circumstance is usually related to how much clay is in the soil. But that same action can actually have a positive effect if you have a sandy soil, for example. It actually increases the soil fertility. So not every action has the same effect, even if it seems like the majority of the effects are the same. And so when we all get these cumulative effects enabling maps, and that's all of us and including the public through this transparent public process, it's important to look at them, not just to see how many are clustered here and there, but to look at the actual effects on the different similar types of environments. So looking for similar environmental sites with similar effects is what we're looking for, rather than just taking a look and saying, oh, hey, look, there's too many of them right here. So I just wanted to add that because I've been bringing it up for so long. And I would like to see it in our formal letter since it is part of what we were asking for. I know that we do have the promise of receiving them, and so I don't know if it's strictly necessary. And yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, Peggy, you had your hand up next.
Yeah, I'm just going to address language in the letter. When you go down to road conditions, the last sentence where it says, "We recognize that 2.0 included road standards and wonder whether the standards in 2.0 should be applied." Wonder sounds kind of weak as, and I would rather it, I don't know if there's something in between. And maybe the county roads department is, you know, the better authority. But, you know, is there something in between 1.0 and 2.0 in terms of roads? And I would rather say something to the effect that we recognize, not wonder whether they should apply, but wonder whether the standards need to be improved to increase the public safety and the overall conditions of the road under 1.0. And whatever that might be could be a recommendation that comes from the roads department. So that's my thoughts on that one, and I just don't like that word, we wonder, like, yeah, we kind of wonder. And then on number three, the last sentence where it says, "Bringing forward applications relying on well water," I think maybe well water exclusively because there could be both well water and collection of water or, you know, multiple ways to look at it and just say not exclusively. Because, you know, sometimes you want to use well water, but not all the time. And so if you have water catchment and you can rely less on well water, then you're minimizing some of the impacts. So it's just adding a word to number three and taking out a word or maybe revisiting that last sentence on number two, road conditions.
Director, do you think it'd be better to go through, you know, if anybody has anything on the first topic, generators, and then go to two? Or would you just like to hear these things and then? And we've actually, Melanie would like to add one. So I mean, how would you, what would be the easiest?
It'd probably be easiest to walk through it item by item and then have the commission decide exactly what the changes are going to be, unless you're going to agree that everything, every commissioner wants to see added is good.
That's kind of what I'm thinking. Maybe we should back up a second and just go on generators. Is, you know, everybody okay with the language in generators? Or does somebody have a thought on changing anything? I'm okay with what the director came up with on generators. So is there, I don't know, Peggy, you have your hand up, and Thomas, you have your hand up.
Let me take that, let me take it down, but I'm fine with what it says on number one.
Okay, we're just talking about generators right now. So is everybody okay with what the director has on, under generators?
Yes.
Okay, it looks like we're okay with generators. Let's move down to road conditions. And Peggy just had made some suggestions. Did the fellow commissioners agree with those suggestions that Peggy was making? And did the director, did, I don't, did you understand what she wanted?
I did. I think, you know, the word wonder, and maybe this isn't the right word, and we can develop a different word. It could be question. It depends on what the commission wants to convey. And the way it's written right now, it's like we're asking a question, whether or not these are appropriate standards. If you believe that different standards should be applied, then it would be worded differently. So I think that's the nature of the question. And I'm fine changing the word wonder to question or something else. Obviously, this is your letter. This is not mine.
Okay, well, I have some thought. Go ahead, Mike.
I was just going to say, I like the changing of the word to question. I was with Peggy on that. I didn't like the word wonder.
I'd be fine with that also. Is everybody okay if we change that word to question instead of wonder?
Yes.
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Change that. I, Thomas has his hand up, but I had mine up first. So I would like to add a, some verbiage to this. As you know, roads have been what I've been worried about the most. And under the request, I'd like to have after A, do a part B and ask the Board of Supervisors to look at the idea of getting rid of the road self-evaluation and have either an engineer or county public works certify the road. And if improvements are required, make those conditions and certify the work. Either the county doing it or having an engineer.
I agree with that.
To, let me ask you this here, Alan, if I could. So you, your idea, part B, add an extra request to look at the idea of deleting the self-certification under 1.0. If that, if I can put it simply, is that what you're asking?
Yes. I'm, I'm not, you know, I was trying to say not to go out there, but I'm saying, okay, you can go out there, but you're going to get somebody to put their license or apartment on the line to say it's okay to do this out in that environment.
Yeah, I would say, you know, having the supervisors reevaluate whether the self-certification is meeting the standards that were intended when that was put in there is actually a much better way of phrasing it than saying, should we apply 2.0 to 1.0, which obviously we, you know, we can't do right now, so.
However, the director would like to word it. I agree with you, Melanie. I'm comfortable with.
If I can share my screen on.
Okay.
Oops, sorry.
It was on the screen momentarily.
If I may say something while we're waiting for that.
Oh, here it is.
There it is.
It's a little difficult to see, but.
I can.
I'm not sure I would put getting rid of it. I would say evaluating whether the intended effects of allowing self-certification are what were intended.
I could say that there, there are no road standards under 1.0. So that was something that the staff did to be able to evaluate whether or not the roads had sufficient capacity to carry the projected traffic.
All I would say to that is either staff needs to evaluate it or an engineer needs to evaluate it.
Not arguing. I just wanted to be clear that it's, there is no intent other than what staff was trying to do.
When you say county, what does that mean? Who is that?
Somebody from public works. I'd rather it would be just an engineer, but I'm willing to go there.
Because then you have the burden of cost going to the applicant if you're saying an engineer. Who's going to bear that burden?
The applicant's going to bear it, just like any other kind of project, the applicant bears it.
Well, I think the intended outcome was that people would be honest and self-certify that, you know, it's a class four road when it really is a class four road. And what we're seeing is that that self-certification, unfortunately, people are not necessarily able to make that self-judgment. And so that's what I meant by intent. It was intent of outcome.
Maybe, Melanie, but I, very seldom do I see the county can make the evaluation of what a class four road is. So I doubt that the general public can.
Right, I agree.
It's the reality. I mean.
I agree. I don't, I agree that it needs to be looked at. I don't think self-certification is working.
Allowed anywhere else. Why should it be allowed?
I don't think it's working, and I think that it is something that the supervisor should revisit.
And if they say it's the greatest thing in the world, we should keep doing it? You won't hear me say anymore about it. You'll just see how I vote. Mike, go ahead.
Thomas was first and then I will.
Okay, go ahead, Thomas. Mike, I can't see who's the.
As far as roads, the next to last sentence, it would just say, do not meet, it says, do not meet category four road or category four standards. Should it also say, or the functional equivalent for the project carrying capacity or something along those lines? And the last sentence where you guys are wanting to take out wonder, maybe and seek advice, whether the standards in 2.0 should be applied to applications filed under 1.0, you know, seek advice. Because I believe what we're doing here is trying to seek advice from the Board of Supervisors as far as how policy should go forward. And lastly, as far as the road self-evaluation, the projects, for me personally, reviewing the projects that I've seen, some projects, the county requires a measuring tape and photos of those pinch point areas or every 400 feet approximately. And personally, I find those easier to help verify that that self-certification is more accurate than the ones that just have a box checked and there's no photos backing up, supporting that. So maybe it could be a policy change within, not even a policy change, but asking for photographic evidence to help supply the planning commission and staff with that documentation of that checked box. Just throwing out ideas.
Okay, I'd like to respond to that one, but Mike, go ahead.
Well, my thoughts were along the same lines as Thomas on the self-certification. To make it, the whole reason for the 1.0 was to try and bring those that were illegal to legal, to be able to be monitored and looked at and then not cause a burden to neighbors. And that's why the, looking at the roads, in fact, since it was not addressed by the supervisors in the original ordinance, I think we could come to a compromise to where it can be the self-certification with verification with the photographs. And if there is a question, then it could be looked at by staff. It would take a little longer to get a permit through. And we're already trying to get as many through as possible. So I'm kind of at a crossroad there. But the self-certification with verification of photos in a set amount of feet could be a way to compromise on it instead of requiring all the staff time to look at the roads, each permits roads, their evaluation, or the additional cost of an engineer since the whole intent of 1.0. Since the whole intent of 1.0 is, is getting things lawfully permitted and get it out there in the tax rolls as well as, uh, being monitored by, um, the authorities.
All right. I'd like to comment to both Mike and Thomas, but the, the whole intent of mine removing the road self-evaluation is because my concern is with liability. And I want to put that liability on somebody who is going to be around to face that liability when catastrophe happens. Okay? So that's the engineer putting his stamp and his, uh, errors and omissions insurance on the line. That's the county. If they're going to be the ones that are going to say it, they're going to take responsibility. Because in the end, it's going to be all of us and everybody out there in the public is going to be paying for this when a fuel truck spills or, you know, there's a bad accident and somebody's killed. There's going to be lawsuits. There's going to be environmental issues. I'm trying to protect the people of Humboldt here. Yes, I'm going to be hurting some of these people that are out there by making the costs go up. But if it was any other industry, there wouldn't even be this question. We, we wouldn't have this discussion because there is no, uh, self-evaluation form for anything other than cannabis. All along, I've been all for making it a legal industry as long as we do it right and it's supposed to be equal. Well, it's not equal. So to make it equal for everybody, get rid of the, that form. That's what I'm trying, I'm asking. They say you're not going to do it. We think that form is the greatest. And our genius from public works that came up with it, it is, you know, has come up with something that's so great. That's fine, but it'll be on the record who, you know, decided that. So when it happens, there'll be people that have to face for it. I'm just trying to get away. So there's somebody there to really take care of the problem when it happens. And hopefully it never does, but I think the odds are that at some point it will. So that's why I want that, that in there. I can't see if somebody's putting their hand up because the, the director has the screen. And I'm not asking them to get rid of it because just, you're going to have to speak up if, if you want to.
I have my hand up.
Okay, Melanie. I just can't see the, now I can, but.
Thank you through the chair. Uh, I have, uh, I, I do like changing wonder to question. I don't like using the word advice. Uh, we are the advisory commission to the supervisors on land use issues, not vice versa. And so I would far prefer to see it phrased as we question whether, um, the standards in 1.0 are meeting minimum, you know, road condition requirements, something like that, not we're seeking advice. I mean, the supervisors seek that advice from us. And so with all of these, the items that we're talking about and, you know, in the letter for the supervisors, I actually think that we should be phrasing it as, do you, the supervisors, wish to direct us to ask the planning department to revisit any of these issues? Because we are the advisory commission to the supervisors. That's not their job.
Good point, Melanie. All right. Um, Thomas, you have your hand up.
No, full disclosure, um, as far as my own personal gain or any of that kind of stuff, my road already meets functional equivalent of category four. So this discussion doesn't impact me one way or another. It impacts the people that trusted the county. Um, I, I understand the concerns, but I also have a big concern about possibly changing, um, rules. And I, I have our view differently. Um, we do not set, we can't change policy without authorization from the board of supervisors. That's why I believe we should seek advice if they believe it would be intelligent for us to, to possibly change policy or not. Um, that's, that's where I see this. And anyone that's questioning category four road, staff may, some staff members may be upset with me, but I highly recommend you get off at the forks of the Yale River, drive Dyreville Loop Road to the McCann Bridge. And that is the functional equivalent of a category four road because it's the functional equivalent. Doesn't mean it needs a centerline stripe and all that kind of stuff. And I'll leave it there.
Mike, come in.
Uh, unmute. Maybe we can, um, put in the, uh, concerns about why, uh, we're questioning the standards, um, of 1.0, if they should be like 2.0, uh, just to give them a little fodder and reasoning behind what we've got, uh, going towards them, uh, about looking at the road standard. So that's my thought there on that.
Well. Something.
Can add the, you know, the concern about liability in there if you want. Uh, but I, I really think that we should not be recommending that they change it totally. But of course, that will be completely up to them, uh, as they had originally.
Absolutely.
Oweed on this ordinance.
That's why I say, that's why I asked if they would look at it. Right. I phrased it with the board of supervisors, look at that, the idea of getting rid of the, the self-evaluation. Peggy, you have your hand up.
I think the letter says it in the first, you know, second paragraph that there's increasing public concern. And when we've had these meetings, these are the three items that we get hung up on and that we get the most, um, public input on, I believe. So, uh, you know, it's not just us, it's the public that's also expressed those interests. And, and if we can resolve this once and for all, and, you know, earlier someone said, one of the public said that we don't have a lot of discretion. If this is the law, it's the law. And so I don't know without a legal opinion and if that's true, that we can't say, well, we want you to do more. We don't want you to, you know, if it says you can have generators all you want in the, in the regulation and then we have to sit here and go, okay, that's the law. We can't ask you to, you know, convert to, to renewable and we can't ask you to collect water and we can't ask you to fix the road because that's the law. Then the law might be flawed. So, um, we don't want to break the law. So maybe the law needs to be improved. I, you know, I'm not saying, at least in my mind, you know, maybe there's something in between nothing and 4.0. And I agree with, um, Alan that I couldn't, and I ran a roads department and I couldn't go out there and tell you what needs to be done on a road. I, I always had to rely on engineering staff and the public works department has engineers on staff. So, um, I, I don't think a self eval, I mean, I can tell you if I was doing a self-evaluation, I wouldn't put anything down there if I had to spend a half million dollars to fix the road up. So, um, I don't think the self-evaluation is the way to go and, and, and pictures are pictures, but they, they don't mean a lot in terms of, you know, knowing whether that road is really safe. And there's in ground underneath it that'll hold up a heavy duty car.
Oh.
Go ahead, Melanie, and then the director has a.
Okay. I wasn't sure if you could see the hands. Um, why don't we just take out wonder, replace it with question? And then, so it would read, we recognize that 2.0 included road standards and question whether the standards, we question whether standards should be applied to applications filed under 1.0. We question whether standards should be applied to applications filed under 1.0. And they can come back and say, no, we don't. Uh, you know, we want you to look into it as the advisory board. Uh, we're going to consult legal counsel or what, you know, what have you. But I mean, to me, that would cover it.
I don't think the supervisors are going to be able to, to know what we're. Know what we're thinking unless they've been watching our meetings if we don't be more specific in that. And that's why I was very specific in what I think, like my concern, to, to deal with my concern.
Oh, yeah. I meant keeping the whole beginning.
Oh, yes, absolutely. I just thought that was fine. I just wanted to add what I asked. That's all I wanted to do.
Oh, oh, yeah. I'm happy with the addition as well. I'm just saying, you know, this little discussion we're having in that last sentence, we could just put question in there instead of wonder. And then whether standards should be applied to applications filed under 1.0, rather than doing the 2.0, 1.0 thing. And then including what you wanted to add.
Okay. The director'd like to comment on this.
Yes. Thank you, Chair. Listening to the discussion, I'm starting to wonder whether or not the issue really is relative to 1.0 versus 2.0 standards. The question seems to be one of the analysis of each road. And so it seems to me that what's being requested is reconsideration of how roads are analyzed. Maybe I'm hearing this wrong.
I would say that that's what the bottom line is, is just that.
Right. Exactly.
But I think, I think, well, my opinion is they need to know that it, that having a road self-evaluation doesn't seem to, to be a very good way to evaluate the road because I don't think that the general public is qualified to do that. I'm not saying that there aren't some people out there that are, but, um, in most cases, I'm going to say they're not. So that's my thought. Noah, you have your hand up as well.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to, to chime in and say that I'm comfortable with the changes that we've just discussed. I think changing, um, wondered, a question is fine. And I specifically wanted to say that I am fine with adding that, um, some paragraph B at the bottom that has your addition, Alan, that specifically says, we think we need either an engineer or we're, you know, whether we need an engineer, uh, or the county road, county public works to sign off. Anyway, I'm okay with that addition. Thank you.
If I share a screen, propose some language.
Yes, please do.
Sorry, at this point, they all look the same. So in the last paragraph where previously we had taken out the wonder and put in, um, question is, we believe that better processes are needed to address the capacity of the road. And then it would go down and add that second bullet point.
Can you pull the second bullet? You just.
Yeah, sorry. My, uh, it's hard, it's hard with one screen. I apologize.
I think that getting, the, the getting rid of sounds a little kind of hokey. Maybe there's a different way to word that.
Eliminating.
Eliminate would sound better than to get rid of, but I, same point.
Same point.
Consider eliminating the self-evaluation.
Yeah, that sounds better.
I'd be fine with that.
That's fine.
Right? It'll get them having the discussion. They may come back and say no, but we brought it up to them.
Can I ask a question? So you do an evaluation, but then what requires you to do what's in the evaluation?
Well, the, uh, permit.
Okay. So then the permit, the, the county, uh, planning department then decides what items in the evaluation have to be executed by the permit applicant?
Or an engineer.
That, it's a, by public works and, and then referred back to planning.
I'll be honest, I'd rather have it only be an engineer, but I figured that if the county is concerned that, that the cost is going to high, they could have county staff look at things that they consider to be minor, shall we say. But they also, somebody needs to go out and see what's done. We maybe should suggest that, that, that it be.
We, if, if I could, we do inspect.
That's fine. I, I just, you know, you can say whatever, but if they don't, don't do it.
Yeah.
That works for.
I think that sounds good. And, uh, if somebody has an issue, a neighbor or what have you or other residents, I'm sure that that will be brought forth before the commission for discretionary, um, decision-making anyway.
Good point. All right.
Remember, this is just for.
Go ahead.
To the supervisors for discussion.
So Chair?
Yes.
Um, as far as the eliminating, is there, you mentioned something in there about county staff, like some of them might be mild or is there a distance, like, uh, under a half mile? Maybe the self-evaluation forms with pictures would be okay. Under a quarter mile, do you have any? I'm just trying to get it like a distance.
Um, I would, there could be something like that, but I think we keep it broad and just say the county if county staff will evaluate the road. If they're willing to say on the record that that road's great, that's good for me because if there's ever a court case, they'll have that on the record to go back and look at it. So. That's all, all I want is them to say, give it their blessing. Or an engineer, or an engineer steps up and puts his license on it.
And all we're doing here is suggesting for the supervisors.
Look at that.
These items. We're not trying to tone it down like we're trying to right now. Leave it broad.
I agree.
And there are already standards that delineate driveways from roads, for example, so in terms of length.
I'm sure when it's all said and done, it'll get made to be as simple as possible. As we're trying to promote cannabis. So I, I would think that they can come back with something much better than the self-evaluation form, but something that's still workable for the industry is what my thought is. So I'm good with that. If everybody else is, let's move on to the next one. We have a lot ahead of us tonight. Everybody good?
Good.
All right. Let's move on to water storage. How does everybody feel about water storage? Thank you, Director, for the help on, on two.
I believe Commissioner O'Neil had a couple of, uh, small tweaks.
Well, I'm not really privy to all of the reasons that were brought in here that were not, you know, we've stopped moving forward because, you know, there was some threat of legal. So I'm not, I don't know really all of that. So what I was saying is that relying exclusively on, uh, well water, I don't know if there's a, a good reason to not ever use well water. I mean, if you have a very good producing well and, you know, it's not under influence, then, um, maybe there, you're using that, but you're also forbearing during the winter. And, and so that's just my thoughts, but, um, there could be other issues there. I know we've had a lot of discussion about whether someone's qualified or not to, to say that it's not drawing from, um, the aquifer that's within the creek. I think they call that under influence, but, um, so I'm not going to address all that because I don't feel really qualified, but, um, yeah, I think he added it there.
Do you see?
Or, or just line, I, I still really strongly feel, and I think it's also in the best interest of the growers that they do the forbearance. They might have a well and they use the well, but I've had wells fail overnight. You know, one, um, earthquake and a well no longer works. And so, you know, to just rely on a well is not a good, um, business plan. And so I think that it should be relying exclusively on well water. There should be a plan for forbearance, even if you do have well water.
I like those changes. How's everybody else feel? Just chime in because with this up on the screen, I can't see your hand. So just raise your hand so we can see you or just speak. Go ahead, Melanie.
Yeah, uh, yeah, through the chair. I agree with those changes. Um, and I really a, agree with Commissioner O'Neil on, um, you know, in terms of what, uh, she brought up because it is related to the cumulative effect.
it is related to the cumulative effects assessment as well. It's, it's site specific and so it would be nice if we had a finer look at where wells are, you know, less reliable or less desirable in terms of the watershed and, uh, you know, looking at the environmental setting. But, you know, I understand that this is just a preliminary letter. And so I don't know if we need to include language to that effect or not in this letter. But I just wanted to state my, um, view on this. I agree that, you know, it's not a one size fits all. It has to do with the environmental setting, not, you know, the same action can have a completely different effect depending on where it is.
Thomas.
I don't disagree that, you know, some rainwater catchment is long, along with well, uh, use is great. Um, it's, it's good because it gives you a dual purpose. Um, I just feel that trying to over condition things is not our place. I believe there's, I, I've said this at the last meeting, I believe there's proper language to deal with all of this problem in the ordinance and that's going to be dealt with through the draft, uh. Um, so it's not the planning commission sitting there with the stick. I believe it should be dealt with through the draft task force. Whereas basically, you know, if you don't have X amount of storage or those requirements, you're going to have to curtail your cultivation. Um, and it's not, it's not our job to use the stick and it would be more following the language of the ordinance without adding new things. And I, if that starts going forward, you'd be amazed how much water storage is going to start taking place on these farms. And I think that's what everyone wants to see. So I'm, I'm not really, I like how it's vague with questions. Um, well, water without adequate, adequate geological analysis. I, I would think, uh, does that include site specific groundwater recharge? Is that your geologic analysis or any of those type of things? I, I don't know. I have a tough one with this because I believe we already have the proper language in the ordinance to deal with this without even imposing people to have water storage. That's it.
Thank you, Thomas. Um, I was okay with it without the changes, so I, I could support that, but I think these changes are fine. I think they're pretty generic and and just give the, I think we gotta give the supervisors what our, so they understand what we're, we're talking about. So we need to be more specific than less specific, if that makes sense. Um, so they can get a feel for what our concerns are. Now whether, what they do with that is their business. I just think that we should give our concerns and I think this does. I think that by, the, the new wording is better than the old at at showing our concerns. So that's, I would be fine with the edits that the director has done if, if everybody else is okay with that or the majority at least.
So instead of required, could you, how about you say catchment be combined with the use of well, of a well? Instead of required, it should be combined with?
Combined, yes. That's good, yeah.
That's good wording.
Yeah. So otherwise I'm fine with those changes to be in the letter then. That's good.
And I'm fine with those changes as well.
Thomas, I, I'm gonna assume that you're not okay with that, but
I like the word combined. Actually Peggy hooked me on that word combined. Thank you Peggy.
Good. Well, is there a consensus that we're okay with, with this new wording and go with this?
Yes.
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 Yes. Sounds great. So we had three items, but, uh, Commissioner McCaver brought up a fourth item in the beginning, so I think you should propose that. And if, if we want to add a fourth one, um, maybe give, so the direct, go slow and so the director can, can kind of type along with you and then we can you know, parcel it out afterwards.
Should we talk about if we want to even start on that first before any language starts?
That's fair enough. I mean, um, is, what's the feeling of the commission on if we're going to add anything to these three items that are already here? I think this is the time, if we were going to add anything, we should. So I, I, I'm going to say that we should, so.
So.
Um, go ahead, uh, Thomas.
So I have serious challenges with the map, even including the mapping in there. Um, I don't know if anyone here is aware of all of the activity that has been taking place in the Bay Area, if they follow any of the newspapers about places getting ransacked by criminal enterprises. And I have a serious problem with this map being produced and released. And I am just curious if staff has, uh, been advised by legal counsel as if this map is used as a target to target lots of places and jeopardize, I know there's a hold harmless clause, but jeopardize a lot of family farms. If this, if the county, um, is willing to put, I mean, blood on their hands, let's say, God forbid, a family farms are robbed and you know, there's guns used and that, that's straight up where I'm coming from. I have a hard time divulging this map.
Okay. Noah, go ahead.
Um, I, I wanted to sort of say follow up on Thomas's point, um, that I have always thought that this map would be somewhat less than parcel specific. Um, and if these are actually going to show individual parcels, um, identified on a map, then I do have, I do share some of Thomas's concern, but, but really that's sort of a separate issue, which is that I thought the map is thing is, is following a separate course and that's something that we've been, um, requesting of and, and negotiating as it were with, with Director Ford. I don't see that one as being in the same category as these other three questions that we have for the department, for the, sorry, for the supervisors, where we have these three consistent issues that keep coming up and causing us um, a lot of friction with the existing rules in, in the ordinance, basically. So to me, it's not that I, um, don't agree that some sort of a map would be terrific and really want to see that happen, but I'm not sure it's in the same category as these other three issues that we have questions about.
I could address that. Um, yeah, I, I mean arguably, uh, us being unable to do the cumulative effects assessment that we're required to do under this, under the SEQA has come up repeatedly. Um, but my, um, raising it this evening was more a question um, in terms of the director and whether the planning department felt they needed to put something like that on this letter, whether it requires approval of the supervisors rather than, you know, including it just because it's something else that we had requested. So I, I feel, you know, confident that the director has promised that we will get these maps in January. But I'm just wondering as a matter of process, does it need, has it all already been approved? Does it need to be approved by the Board of Supervisors? And if so, does it, uh, need to go on this letter or a separate one?
Director, do you want to?
Chair.
So I don't believe that it needs to be approved by the Board of Supervisors. I have committed that it will be available on the item on the January 6th meeting. I have stated repeatedly the concern with divulging this map because it, and I use this term before, it is a treasure map. And they come parcel specific. There will not be addresses, there will not be APNs on it. You will see blocks, you will see colors. The other thing that we're going to do is show you at the same time the code enforcement actions that had been taken. Because frankly, we have eliminated more grows than we have permitted. And so you should take that into consideration because a lot of these, 75% of what you're reviewing are pre-existing cultivation. That's baseline.
Thank you.
Mike Newman.
Uh, thanks Chair. Um, through the chair, I, I agree that, uh, this is not an item that we need to put on this letter. We have the three main topics for the supervisors that are under the ordinance, 1.0 and 2.0 um, that are there. I think, um, adding that on just, um, makes too much, just, uh, white noise in there. And it's not necessary as we just heard from, uh, the director. Um, and I agree that, you know, the treasure map, I'd like to see as much dilution on it as possible so that, uh, it cannot be used or will not, or makes it more difficult to be a treasure map, uh, for targeting specific parcels, but the accumulation and, um, that we've been talking about is something that is good to have, um, in our evaluations, but I don't believe we need to add it to this letter. I think these three items that we've just gone through and agreed upon um, should be it and, and we can send it on to the Board of Supervisors then.
I agree. Yeah, I agree that the director adequately answered that question and addressed the issue and I don't think it needs to go on the letter.
Okay, excellent. So I'm in agreement as well. So it sounds like we're good with what we have, but Thomas, I'm not sure if you put your hand back up or if you just never took it down.
No, I took it, I put it back up because, um, the cumulative effect, I believe that we do analyze that because there's limits per watershed. And it would also be nice that we're so worried about this cumulative effect, remember what baseline is. And it'd be nice if it's possible to have maybe the amount of square footage that was, has been removed since, uh, code enforcement. I don't know if that's too much to ask of staff. But it would be, it's amazing how much below baseline when you factor in the abatement, which I, you know, we talked about cumulative effects, but let's look at what baseline was. It was not pretty. So it would just be nice, I, I agree with everyone not putting on this letter and I appreciate everyone, but just, um, that's it.
All right. So, um, I think everybody's in agreement with, with your letter, Director. You did a good job.
It's the planning commission letter.
Okay, right. Well, you penned it to start with, so I appreciate it. I think we're all good. Um, we'll look forward to seeing the maps when those are ready and, and such and we won't include that. So I believe we should open this up for public comment, so if everybody's nod that they're okay with that, I'm going to move on to, uh, public comment. It's like we have three publics, so, uh, there they grow. So 7663 is your first one. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, um, my name is Selena Rowan and I wanted to comment on this letter. Thank you so much for, um, allowing me to speak and thank you so much for your conscientious discussion. Um, I am the CEO of Midnight Gardens. Um, I'm the, we're a small 6,500 square foot, um, homestead farm and, um, we purchased our farm this year and it already had an annual state license and a county special, uh, use permit. And we've, um, completed almost all of our conditions of approval. Um, this was also our first home that we ever purchased. And, um, I'm a traditional herbalist who has studied crack methods, working with herbalists in the world. I have a lot of experience in it. Um, and so my experience in witnessing these kinds of discussions is that I, I just worry that the, the, the goal, um, continues, the goal line continues to change, the goalpost. And as a 1.0 applicant, um, I'm terrified at the idea that suddenly my permit might potentially be reevaluated and have a number of multi-thousand dollar expenses added to it. I've made about 60,000 in sales this year. 13,000 went to California state taxes. $6,400 at least will be going to Measure S taxes. $8,000 will be going to property taxes. $5,000 will be going to state license fee. We're looking at $34,000, um, merely in these compliance costs out of the 60,000 that I've made so far. So that doesn't count any of my cost of goods or expenses or operating expenses. Um, as a small business owner who, um, has self-certified as a sun and earth certified farm and a clean green certified farm, um, I need to be able to have predictable rational guidelines appropriately scaled to my operation. I'm also a project trellis equity program applicant. Um, I live on my land and I'm at risk of losing my home and my business that I just purchased. Again, my first home I've ever owned, um, should more barriers be placed in my way? I know I'm not alone. I speak, I'm in a, a network of other, um, family farms. And I just want to state that, that we're on the edge and anything else additional could put us over. Thank you very much for your, um, time. Thank you.
Thank you caller. Public 3849, please. Go ahead, 3849.
Hi, this is Polly Kinsinger with Mama Bear Farms. I, um, I'm interested in this letter very much. Thank you for submitting it and, and allowing us to speak on its behalf. Um, your letter reflects, excuse me, a variety of frustrations that permit applicants are feeling when goalposts are changed as the process goes along. Uh, we've, as cultivators have been struggling to keep up with the current consistencies of standards being applied and I'm pleased that you're asking for clarification from our elected officials as to how you should proceed. I have a couple of specifics, um, that I had questions about in your letter and specifically in number three. I'm unclear what you're asking in item B because it just says develop regulations for permitting and use of wells. Are you asking that the Board of Supervisors develop regulations? Or are you proposing regulations that you'd like the Board of Supervisors to authorize? Um, and if the latter, what are those specific recommendations? Um, as for request number A in item number three, do the Board of Supervisors know the details of the planning commission's quote substantial water storage regulations that you've been applying? Um, the specifics of those, uh, details should be given to them, otherwise do they really understand what's going on? And number four in your mapping, and I realize it's not in your letter, but I thank you for bringing it up because it does interest me as a cultivator in, in a watershed area that is impacted. I'm interested how many, how many, um, applicants are legitimate up where I am. And as, as Commissioner Mulder said, I'm more interested in how many of us up here are legitimate, but who have been eliminated and are no longer using water sources that we have been allowed to use and, and we're using it without permission. And how is that restoring the water that was, is now currently going into our water, watershed? I see creeks being, um, having more water in them than they did before. So I'm pleased about that and, and I'm kind of interested in the map myself, but not with specifics. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. 7454.
Ken Solatsky, I think you got the verbiage down just as far as the community is concerned, or a lot of us in the community, I can't speak for all of them or most of them, or I can speak for myself. Um, yeah, we do, we do question whether self-certification, uh, basically serves the health, safety and welfare of the citizens of Humboldt County. And it doesn't matter whether it's with pictures, without pictures, doesn't matter whether it's 12 miles or 1,200 feet. Uh, we question whether it isn't better to have a, a engineer stamp, whether it be a private engineer or the county engineer, not just Public Works, but an engineer stamp in the best interest to protect the public's health, safety and welfare regarding roads. Um, for those who started out in this process at the beginning here, the supervisors said we are building an airplane while we're flying it. And that basically means that you're going to have to make changes and adaptations. And if you want to call that moving the goalpost, basically to satisfy and take care of the needs of the community and the environment, those things are normal. basically to satisfy and take care of the needs of the community and the environment, those things are normal in most processes. I did wish to make mention, I'm not an attorney and I would not expect you to take any credibility I would give making legal determinations. Even attorneys, you have two lawyers and frequently one will say one thing, I'll say the other. That's the process and then a judge decides. You had an earlier speaker here making legal determinations on CEQA. And those may have been an individual amateur's opinion, which of course mine would be also. But if you're gonna, if you're gonna base anything on statements that were made by somebody, I would do that based upon your own legal counsel, not somebody even in my position who would represent that I have the ability to make CEQA determination to tell you what you have to do, what you can't do and can't do. That does worry me when a bunch of credence would be, even led to anything I would tell you regarding CEQA. I always was under the assumption that in the CEQA process, you can make things that are less damaging to the environment, but you can't go the other way and make them more damaging. And I can't say, oh, you can get in trouble by doing things that have less of an impact on the environment and rather than, rather than, you know, in other words, you can tighten the wrench down, is my opinion, but hey, you gotta take that with a grain of salt and talk to your legal counsel rather than taking legal opinion from the public. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Public 7429.
Hi, good evening. This is Robie Tenorio. Thank you for addressing these issues tonight. As far as generators go, generators negatively affect wildlife and I think that's why it comes up so often. And they are fire danger, especially when there's more than one and the applicant who has, as part of their system, does not live there. I know in many areas here in the Edersburg area, owls are no longer heard here. They were very, very active here. As far as roads go, I think that roads, they may accommodate access to the site by workers, but what is really critical is that you need ingress and egress for emergency personnel. For example, there was an application that you were reviewing some months ago that was on the Wood Ranch and the planner didn't even take his tape measure up there and it was five miles long. There was an extreme lack of turnouts and the road would not allow enough room for both fleeing and someone going in to help someone else. So it's a really serious thing. As far as wells, as the spokesperson for the organization that sent you the letter on hydroconnectivity and the long detailed explanation of how to determine hydroconnectivity that we submitted with that letter was from a hydrogeologist that we retained. This letter was sent to you for education. It was not a legal threat. It did not threaten a lawsuit. This was how it was presented to you by the director, of course, but I don't know why he presented it that way. Perhaps he needed a place to say that, that, I don't know, there was a lack of staff's responsibility on determining that all along. So it created a bit of a conflict for environmentalists who are speaking and add, add a place to put blame. And as far as the, the wells go, I just think that we need to speak, think about storage even without droughts. We're trying to bring the fisheries back. And I absolutely support the need for maps. I don't see how we can evaluate land use and the impacts without the knowledge of what is there. And I can go to the county's GIS or Google or anything like that and click on any parcel and it will tell me everything about that parcel that's in the permit process. It gives me the address and access to a seller. So as far as these new maps that would tell us about cumulative effects, they are not going to create any more danger than is already existing. And speaking of existing, this baseline of pre-existing is a fable. There is not as many farms that were this large as they are now. Everyone has had to lie to get these permits because it's such a difficult process. You have to scale up to be able to afford it. And, and they were not doing three, four and six harvest a year. A large grow, a green rusher that everyone in the neighborhood was really upset about, that was blowing it up. They would maybe be 10,000 at the very, very most. I never even saw one and we had a guy up the hill who basically took off the top. All right. Thank you.
Sorry, Robie. You got to go over quite a bit. I just wasn't paying close enough attention. Public 7108.
Hi. Just for the record, a lot of stuff Robie brought up, I was going to bring up the treasure map stuff. The treasure map is already there, so we don't have to worry about that. Changing the goalposts as conditions change, I think that's reasonable to be doing. The road thing, I wanted to caution you against this. Having staff go out there because I watched the same zoning administrator meeting that Robie did with this young planner going out there without his tape measure and well, in the end, they decided it was functionally equivalent. I know a person that lives out there that does road work. He said that road was really dangerous. So having an engineer, but not staff because I think a bunch of the planners really don't know about it. Generators, when 1.0 went through, they were acting like this was just going to be backup, kind of supplemental. Now what we have is people running generators, multiple generators 24 hours a day so they can do all their mixed light, all the mixed light wasn't happening, this how much impact by square footage. Well, if you had square footage outdoor, under the trees and then you go to full sun, three or four crops mixed light, those are very different impacts. So just saying, just because it's the square footage doesn't have anything to do with the access, water availability or anything else. Yeah. And the water storage, I mean, if you believe in climate change and we're trying to do the right thing here in Humboldt County, I think having people have summertime at least water storage during the forbearance. Yeah. So thanks for talking about this and sending this and I'm also looking forward to the maps. One thing that happens is these projects get proposed, nobody in the neighborhood or the area knows about it until it comes up and you get 10 days notice if you pick your mail up every day. It would be good to know what's being planned, what's in store for your neighborhood. Where are these 800 in the queue going to be going? So thank you for listening and.
Thank you, Bonnie. All right. Next caller, Nalyn Delap.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Nalyn.
Hey there. Good evening. Planning Commissioners, Natalie Delap, Humboldt County Growers Alliance. As a longtime participant of these hearings, I do appreciate that this letter is being developed and that you are seeking guidance and advice from the supervisors because it seems that every other week, it's like Russian roulette and how an applicant is going to be conditioned or not seems to be inconsistently applied. As to the generators, I think that the commission should follow Thomas's recommendation related to the capacity of generators as to whether or not solar or PG&E needs to be conditioned. Related to roads, as a reminder, both pre-existing and new farms are in the queue under 1.0. There are many farms that have been in existence for many years, sometimes decades, that have shown that they have roads capable of servicing the site. And then what is supposed to occur for the pre-existing operation? Should an engineer deem that a project site does not meet category four or cat four functional equivalent? Are they supposed to rebuild an entire road network? Or is the Planning Commission going to tell the 1.0 operator that they're no longer allowed to cultivate their site? Or that now they have to triple R? What will be the mitigations planning and building or the commission will require of these permit applicants? As to well water, we're talking about moving the goalposts very suddenly. The county and state fully encouraged the use of groundwater by cultivators in both land use ordinances. If we're going to talk about water storage and groundwater, I think that you should consider the same kind of timeframe as you are with generators, that by the end of 2025, some percentage, 25, 50 or 75% of irrigation water should be stored during the forbearance period. And then related to maps, I'd like to say thank you to the director for your statements related to farmer state safety and cumulative impacts related to more grows that have been abated than permitted. I think that bringing details to the public's attention about how baseline has changed since 2016 would be most illuminating. And please make sure that all types of commercial and residential operations are included on these maps so that the public can see all things that may contribute to the cumulative impacts. Thank you.
Thank you, Nalyn. Public 5375. Go ahead, 5375.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Lindsay Jones. I'm an active member of the cannabis community. Business owner of Aloha Humboldt Cannabis Farm in Willow Creek. I'm also the secretary of the Willow Creek Cannabis Alliance as well as the executive director of the Willow Creek Chamber of Commerce. And so I'm speaking to you on behalf of myself, my cannabis community and economic and social sustainability, looking in, in our county and, and Willow Creek region specifically. I've lived in Humboldt County since 2002 and in Willow Creek since 2008. Since Prop 64 passed, I've watched our community struggle to enter the regulated market with extensive requirements that other agriculture is not required to do. So after going through the permitting process for six years, it's clear to me this process was not designed for the existing cultivation sites that were encouraged to come forward to succeed. The enormity of the projects and the permitting process was daunting, to say the least. So the people that took the leap of faith to move forward, trusting that the county would honor their word and move these legacy rows into compliance, working together, I just don't think is being honored. We were encouraged to install a well ourselves. So we spent thousands of dollars doing soils reports, having the engineer up, drilling, filling, no water. And then we attempted to do a 50,000 gallon water tank. The tank was ordered, down payment, en route to the farm, and then we were informed that we would have to require a secondary containment basin. As you can imagine, this is an impossible ask for 50,000 gallons. So then we had to cancel our order, pay a 14,000 restocking fee through Pioneer Tanks. And so it just, it's continuous costs to farmers being told, do this, do that. Moving the goalpost, it's a, it's a thing that is creating unattainable goals for farmers. So while many of these 1.0 applicants were required to do these water conditions, then there's also just thinking that we are being inspected. We have a forbearance. I have springs on our land that we can't use, even though they're abundant. And so we have daisy chained 5,000 gallon tanks throughout our property, we'll call it Tank Town, that have basically cost our life savings. And so now as we look to how we're attempting to do these road evaluations, you know, we did the photos. If we're required to have an engineer come through and reevaluate our road just with feeling the pains of the current market crash, it is completely unattainable to make this additional expensive requirement. It is literally the straw that will break the camel's back for so many. So it seems to me just that the board, I mean, minus Thomas.
Five seconds.
Is not in touch with the social and economic climate of our county. So please make attainable goals.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephen Liu.
I wanted to put some feedback based on some of the comments that were made in the letter. In no way am I, you know, saying that I'm, you know, an expert with respect to CEQA law. You know, the, the email I sent to the planning clerk with the attachment was a reference to discuss the matter with county council. With respect to these road requirements and the wells and these other issues affecting 1.0s versus 2.0s in the letter to the Board of Supervisors, I'm putting it out there that it may be helpful to also separate baseline cultivation under 1.0 for pre-existing applicants versus 1.0 applicants that are for new cultivation. I think a lot of the public controversy that came from these applications, this process with respect to generators and with respect to wells is a lot to do with new cultivation and new projects without baseline diversion and baseline impacts the watershed. So I'm wondering if that could be considered as part of this discussion. Furthermore, with respect to the road situation, it was surprising for me to hear that the 1.0 had no, you know, going through this because this category four requirement has been part of this planning process, decision-making process for five years, that it had no basis in an ordinance. So I would refer the Planning Commission to review the County Development Code, which defines the category four roadway to support road volumes from zero to 100 trips per day. For category three, which is a 16-foot one-way road, that allows traffic from zero to 100 trips per day. From category two roadways, that can be as narrow as 10 to 12 feet with turnouts. That can be for 0 to 50 cars per day. For category one, could be a 10-foot wide road, 20 mile per hour speed, 0 to 20 trips per day. So there are other, other road categories to be considered if this, and this blanket requirement for a category road, a category four roadway as being, you know, that you're currently evaluating, if you're going to consider conditioning projects under 1.0, you should condition them based on the expected traffic and the cap and lower roadway category should be considered because that is the, that's, there's a baseline use for 1.0 applicants. But I don't disagree that if it is a new project in a remote area, that a, a more stringent road category should be imposed. But I would request that considerations be made for existing traffic for, for original 1.0 applicants. And if a new road evaluation standard is.
10 seconds.
Then the evaluation of the road should be to what is actually going to be driven there and a lower roadway category should be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. And last caller, Tanya Horlick.
Hi, thank you so much, Commissioners. I just wanted to state for the record that I really I empathize with what you are doing as Commissioners more now than I did before. As a radio broadcaster, trying to keep people in legal compliance and working with a vast body of people with different opinions, I just wanted to express to you all that I wish you all the time and space you need to make the right determinations. I can tell that you're up against a lot of different people's opinions while trying to uphold laws, while trying to make new laws right. And I wish you clarity and space and time so that you can make the right determinations. I can only imagine the pressure that you face. I attended this meeting to comment on a specific project that I can tell we won't get time to in this meeting. So I wish you the very best in all your work and all the hours you have to put in. I just wanted to acknowledge that that is my true feeling to you all. While I also want to second basically all of the public comments that I've heard, I think they're all legitimate. And I hope that somehow Humboldt County can in time develop more industries beyond cannabis to sustain a viable economy here in California. And I thank you very much for the time and opportunity to speak with you. I wish you all well.
Thank you. Those were nice words. Okay, anybody else? Public comment on this. See none. I'm going to close it. I'm going to bring it back to the commission. Is there any, after hearing public comment, is there any thought? Okay, I was just going to kind of say something, but I get it. Any, go ahead, Peggy.
I just have a question for Mr. Ford and it's just a technical question. If someone's already received their permit under 1.0 and there's changes in the ordinance, it's not retroactive back, is it? I mean, we're talking about moving forward with new applicants because some of the comments, I'm a little confused, maybe they're 1.0 and they haven't got their permit yet. But then again, sometimes it sounds like they already have a permit and they're. But then again, sometimes it sounds like they already have a permit and they're afraid they're going to have to change your standards. And so I just wonder how this works.
Well, thank you, Commissioner O'Neill. That is an excellent question. And for people who are already entitled, they already have their permits, even if these changes that are being discussed were to be implemented, they would not retroactively apply to permits that have already been approved.
Thomas.
That was my first question, so thank you, Peggy. Two other questions, just because it was brought up in public comment. When there was a hydrogeologist doing a report for us at the beginning of this discussion, there is reference to that letter that the county was, and I never got to the question, but that hydrogeologist had told us there's only about a half dozen hydrogeologists that are certified to do work within Northern California. So I'm just curious if the hydrogeologists that analyzed the report and sent us the letter, are they even certified to work in Northern California? Because I can't get any, it's hard for me. I haven't been able to try to contact them, so that's why I asked the question.
So, interesting question, and it is an area of debate because of the unique geologic formations within Humboldt County. There are different levels of expertise and experience and understanding. So not all hydrogeologists or even geologists are going to be the same. So a geologist or a hydrogeologist that is familiar with the local geology would be far better. And given the, and I have had a discussion with some geologists and it would seem that geologists do have the ability to give guidance on groundwater.
Okay, thank you for that. And then the last thing, because generator use keeps getting talked about. So while we were taking public comment, I just did a Google of what energy use is. And it looks like, according to Google, the average home is 10,715 kilowatt hours per year. And an average ADU is roughly 2,883 kilowatt hours per year. That's a 500 square foot ADU. And if someone was going to build on a TPZ partial home and an ADU under the AOB policy, would they be required to have any generator restrictions that would be around the same energy use?
If they were getting an AOB, I don't think there would be restrictions there.
Okay, thank you for that.
All right, anybody else? And if not, are we all good with having the director do these edits and get them back to meet a sign and send off to the board supervisors?
Let's get that done.
Agreed.
Yeah, I'm good. Let's go. Thanks. This took a lot longer than I thought it was going to. So let's take a quick five-minute break. We usually had one an hour and a half ago. And then we'll come back and see what we can get done. All right, see you in five. Video to go on. All right, welcome back, everyone. During the break, the director spoke with me about how long the meeting's going and how he thinks this next one's going to be pretty long. So I'm going to give the mic to him and let him make a suggestion. I think that it will make some people happy.
Thanks, Chair. I would imagine this next item could go an hour to an hour and a half. Then we've got an item that was continued from the last meeting to allow all seven commissioners to be present. Then we've got an item that was continued that should be fairly simple. And then a fourth item, and then we get into the public workshop, which I don't think we're going to get to tonight. And then I don't think we're going to get to anything after that. We've got the Salmon Restoration Federation, which I know there's probably a lot of people in attendance for. And I think rather than having people sit here for another hour to find out that we're not going to get there, would probably be considerate to continue those now.
So you want to actually do a continuation of those?
I would continue everything. I would continue the workshop and everything under public hearings that hasn't already been continued to the meeting of January 6th.
So moved.
Okay. Do we have a second on that? Do we need?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Laura, roll call vote on that.
Got some hands up.
Oh, well. I better open it up for public comment then. Okay, let me get to open up. There we go. So I'm gonna open this up for public comment. The first caller is Bjorn Zep.
Good evening. Good evening, commissioners. Thank you. My name is Bjorn Zep. I'm with Rain and Zep. And tonight I'm representing the MidGAD LLC project. And before you continue, I'd just like to mention that the Trellis Grant deadline was extended to accommodate projects that were going to be approved this evening. And this project has a grant application ready to be submitted. And we are very much hoping to be heard this evening.
Think we're gonna get that.
So with that, I would request that MidGAD be heard this evening and not continued. And that's my only comment.
Okay, pull that one off, but it doesn't mean we're going to get to it. And next caller is Dana Svolvman.
Hi there. We're the project proponents for the Marshall Ranch Stream Enhancement Project with Salmoned Restoration Federation. Interestingly, we're in the same position. We have a large state grant that's due tomorrow and additional continuation definitely delays our timeline or ability to secure implementation funding. I do understand Director Ford's concern that it's potentially a large item and not sufficient time. But I'm wondering if it can be discussed this evening?
No, to answer that, no, but we'll leave it on the agenda. And if we get there, I don't think we're going to, but we'll try.
Okay.
Should we get started this evening? It's the best we can do. So that means that we'll need an amendment to the motion in the second to be everything from, it's gonna be an item.
K2.
K2 on.
I'll amend that.
Okay, in a second.
What exactly are we amending?
We're, I'm amending it so that it'll keep those two on the agenda tonight.
So, I'm sorry, it's K3?
It'd be K3 on.
Yes.
Yeah.
You're good with that?
Yes, I am.
All right, Laura, roll call vote on that, please.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neill?
Yes.
Melanie McCaver?
Yes.
Alan Fangio?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes, and even though I'm on a family trip again, I'm going to go till 10 o'clock if we're allowed.
And go over, that's our choice. So that, we can discuss that when we get there. All right. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Laura.
All right.
All right, so now we're gonna do the, move to the Ocean West Manufactured Home Park Expansion and take a staff report.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Jacobson. I'm a planner with the county and I'm presenting Ocean West Manufactured Home Park Expansion. Ocean West is an age-restricted 55 and up manufactured home park. It is located on the eastern side of the northbound lane of 101 and south of Murray Road in McKinleyville. Access to the existing park is from a driveway on Murray Road shown here with the red arrow. Currently, there are 130 existing homes, a clubhouse, and a parking lot. Surrounded, surrounding uses are residential, neighborhood, commercial, and a public facility. The proposed expansion consists of 25 homes, 22 on the northwest corner lot and three on the northeast corner lot. A new access road is proposed to connect the existing park with the northwest expansion area. The restoration and revegetation of the riparian corridor and streamside management area of Widow White Creek are proposed. The removal of 51 trees are proposed for construction of the access road, walking trails, and further restoration of enhancement of riparian habitat. And recreation improvements throughout the park are proposed as well. The northwest expansion area is shown here with 22 new home spaces proposed. The northeast expansion is shown here with three new home spaces proposed. Widow White Creek flows northwest through the park. An access road is proposed, which will encroach into the streamside management area of the creek. The existing entrance and exit to Ocean West on Murray Road will remain. In total, 25 new homes would be added to the county's housing supply. And this is the road shown here. The proposed road. This is what the western expansion parcel currently looks like. It's vacant, and that's where 22 new homes are proposed. And this is the eastern expansion parcel, also vacant, where three homes are proposed. A special permit for the project is needed for development within the streamside management area, which is the SMA of Widow White Creek, a Class 1 perennial stream that flows northwest through the park, downstream, meeting with Norton Creek, and flowing into the Mad River near its confluence with the Pacific Ocean. The access road connecting the western expansion with the existing park will result in 209 square feet fill of one perimeter wetland. 3,970 square feet of project construction would occur within the wetland buffer. And 4,261 square feet of construction would occur within the SMA, the streamside management area. An alternatives analysis was completed and the proposed configuration of the access road was found to be the least impactful option. And you can see here with the graphic, the SMA is identified, the wetlands are identified, the proposed road alignment is identified, and the wetland buffer is identified, as well as the proposed restoration area shown here. And this is a trail, proposed trail here. And we'll be looking at that again in a further slide. There has been some concerns about how SMAs are defined in the completed analyses for the project. There are two ways that the SMA can be defined within the county. In most of the county, there is no WR, which is a wetlands combining zone. And so the SMA is measured from the top of the bank or the edge of riparian vegetation. In this instance, Widow White Creek is specifically mapped with a WR combining zone. And the SMA ordinance identifies the SMA as the area mapped, subject to site-specific biological reporting. The WR mapping was developed as part of the McKinleyville Community Plan, which utilized the stream transition line as the area to measure from. This has been applied to provide for the site-specific mapping of the SMA in this instance. The riparian and wetland mitigation plan prepared by SHN appropriately uses this definition of an SMA and uses the McKinleyville Community Plan definition of a wetland and a wetland buffer in their analyses, which are included in the staff report. An initial study and mitigated negative declaration and ISMD was prepared and circulated in February and March of 2020. Public comments were received and were addressed by revised, and were addressed by revised plans, which have been incorporated into the staff report. And because the environmental impacts are no less than those of the previous site plans, the ISMD is still being used. There are four sections of the ISMD that would have significant impacts if mitigations were not included, but are less than significant with mitigation measures. Those sections are biological resources, cultural resources, hydrology and water quality, and mandatory findings of significance. Mitigation measures are shown here, some of them are shown here. And they include erosion control measures, bio-retention basins for stormwater catchment and filtration. Non-native vegetation will be removed in the restoration area. 630 square feet of three perimeter wetlands along Widow White Creek will be restored. Shown here, oh, sorry, shown here. Representing, this represents a three-to-one restoration ratio of wetlands restored to wetland area impacted. 18,750 square feet of riparian woodland would be restored. 232 trees would be planted, and a total of 51 trees will be removed, representing a four and a half to one tree planting to tree removal ratio. This project is proposing to impact SMA areas and has included a number of provisions to protect water quality and fish habitat. And will be enhancing riparian habitat to an extent that the post-project conditions will be a significant improvement in the quality and quantity of riparian habitat on-site compared to what it is currently. So mitigation measure substitution, number 10 of the circulated ISMD, proposed to restore 350 square feet of wetland and 15,000 square feet of riparian woodland. The applicant changed the design of the project by proposing to add a trail adjacent to the access road. After the ISMD was circulated, to mitigate for the impacts resulting from the proposed trail, the mitigation measure is being substituted with a greater area of wetland and riparian restoration. This is consistent with section 15074.1 of the SECA guidelines, which authorizes the substitution of a mitigation measure if it is more effective in mitigating potential significant effects than the original measure. The measure would result, would result in an additional 280 square feet of three perimeter wetland restoration and an additional 3,750 square feet of riparian woodland restoration compared to the original mitigation measure. So this is the recreation map. Recreational amenities map. The zoning ordinance requires 1,500 square foot, feet of recreation space per acre when expanding manufactured home parks. The requirement is being met through the addition of trails alongside the creek throughout the park and along the tree line at the southern edge of the western expansion, shown here. And trails here. And also, here's a trailhead here that would connect all the way throughout the park. And they're also proposing a dog park, a community garden and orchard, additional plantings, overlooks, and picnic areas. All shown here. And then this is the breakdown of the square footage. And currently, they have a clubhouse, benches, and a trail. So this would be a significant increase, as you can see with the numbers, a significant increase of recreational space within the park. Many public comments were received for this project. Two community meetings were held, the first in March 2020. The plans were revised following the first meeting. And many trees that were proposed for removal in those initial plans are now being kept. The original plans had 30 new homes, and now 25 new homes are proposed. And then a second meeting was held in August of 2021 this year, where the current plans were presented and community members expressed concern about these items shown here. And through project design and condition- And through project design and conditions of approval, all public comments have been addressed and are detailed in the staff report. Very detailed in the staff report. This is just an overview of the most common concerns and comments of support as well. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the resolution to approve the project as conditioned. Thank you. I'm available for any questions.
All right.
I'm gonna stop sharing my screen.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead. Mike?
One question regarding trees and the removal and the addition. Can you bring up that graphic? On where they're at?
The tree removal map? Is that what you want? Okay.
Yes.
Yes, I can.
And then where the additions will be going? Little, just a little bit.
Yeah. So this is the tree removal map. And so the red are the exact trees that will be removed. And this is actually not show where the trees that will be planted are going, but I can also bring up the where the riparian restoration, that map that was shown before, where it showed the road and everything, where those restoration areas will be, but...
Were some of the concerns?
Generally around here.
Yeah, were some of the concerns from the folks living there and about the removal of those trees, what was most of the reason for it? Was it for privacy? Because of the size of them? Versus the new growth that will be then replacing them?
I think there were a lot of concerns originally, because originally the plans were going to propose to remove all of these trees on the southern edge of this expansion. And so people living along that edge were very upset. And so that was a lot of the concern. A lot of the trees, most of the trees that will be removed for the restoration area are non-native. They were planted a number of years ago, and many of them are unhealthy. So I think there were many comments about why they were concerned. I think privacy was one before they altered this plan to keep all of those trees at the southern edge. And then others were, you know, bird habitat and windbreak.
Okay.
Yeah.
And on this photo here that you're showing, all of the white spaces are part of that new expansion over on the left side, that parcel there. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. Those are the 22 homes on the western expansion proposed.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Peggy O'Neil, go ahead.
I think I read it on the map, but I just wanted to make sure that one access road is gated, the one that's closest to the freeway? Because it says it's emergency access.
Yes.
Vehicles would not be able to just freely go in and out there, right?
That is correct. Caltrans commented with the original plans that they wouldn't support a driveway so close to the off-ramp.
Yeah, I would be concerned too, because I've driven that road a lot, and that would be way too close. So it would have a gate on it and...
So, yeah, it would have a gate with a lock that emergency personnel, and I believe park management would have the keys to. With, yeah, it would have a Knox box, and I think it would have pedestrian access though.
And these are rentals that are gonna be there for seniors? Is it homeownership?
Throughout the park, there are both. There are people who rent the homes, and there are people who own them. I believe that they will be for sale. That's my understanding.
They're much smaller sized, it looks like, than the existing homes that are in there. And they're all connected to the services district, McKinleyville Community Service District.
They will be. They'll have separate connections than the existing park for water and sewer and PG&E as well. They are somewhat smaller. I think a lot of the homes in the existing park are double-wide, and I think these are single.
And do they have underground PG&E, or is it overhead?
I'm not sure.
Is it?
Noah, you had your hand up.
Yeah, just a quick question before we get to public comment. Rebecca, could you show again the screen, sorry, the map, and show where the clubhouse is located and the parking for the clubhouse? Because I know that was one issue that was raised by the letters, is loss of parking for the clubhouse. We're concerned about that. Thank you.
Yes. So, I don't know if you, and I can close in if you want. You can try to do that. So, this, let's see. This is the existing clubhouse. I'm sorry, this isn't the right the right recreational amenities slide, sorry. So this whole area right now is parking. And the clubhouse is right here. I'm sorry. So this is the existing clubhouse, and this whole area right now is just a gravel parking lot. And people use it for overflow parking throughout the park. But there is adequate space throughout the park for on-street parking. And a lot of the homes have driveway parking that you can kind of see here. Some of them have garages as well. And the streets are wide enough to accommodate on-street parking on one side. So, and there will also be seven parking spaces here for the clubhouse and for to access these amenities here.
Okay, thanks a lot for...
Yeah. And I can keep this up.
If anybody else wants to ask a question, just ask, because I can't see a hand up right now because her screen is covering. But that's okay. Don't...
Well, with that question about the clubhouse and the takeaway of the parking area to convert to a dog park and a community garden, you know, walkway, benches, and picnic area, is that all part of the requirement for the increase in spaces that they needed to increase over there?
Yeah, so with the expansion of an existing manufactured home park, there are increased recreation requirements. So with each acre, they need to have 1,500 square feet of recreation space. So that would be the whole acre to the park. That's 30 acres, I believe. And so, yes, and so this is kind of the breakdown here. And so they would have to have 1,500 square feet of recreation area per acre, which equals roughly 30 acres. So this is the total that they would have to have. And they would be meeting that requirement by essentially taking away a lot of this parking, this overflow parking here, but they would be having all of these amenities.
Is there part of the increase area that could be parking? Like those three spaces, I think there was? Where are those three new spaces in relation to the clubhouse?
So the clubhouse is right here, and can you see my mouse?
Yep.
Okay, so the clubhouse is right here, and then the seven spaces will be right here. So just right across this...
No, I'm talking about the three new spaces, homes.
Yeah.
Different than this big one to the left there of the clubhouse.
The, and I can pull up a parking plan if you want. I can do that.
Okay.
One moment. So here, so the, these numbers, these represent...
You're not screen sharing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay, can you see it now?
Now I can.
Okay, great. So these numbers around here represent potential parking spaces. So all of these roads are 32 feet wide, which can accommodate one side of on-street parking. So this is just conceptual, but you can see here in the eastern expansion that there could be three parking spaces. And then each, for both expansion areas, you could have three spaces. You could have two in tandem here, and then one next to it. So all the driveways would accommodate three cars.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
So I think maybe I was mis-hearing one of my fellow commissioners, but I think it was maybe what I was hearing was there was a lot of concerns from comments about losing parking spaces. But so what I was maybe hearing is give up one of those 25 spaces to make him parking, and maybe I'm mis-hearing that. But if that was the case, it looks like spot 213 is the closest proximity to the clubhouse, and it's close to that, oh. That trail doesn't go all the way through there, never mind. So I don't know, but... I mis-read the trail map now that I'm seeing these little red things. But if there was something to give up for parking, maybe that lot, spot 213, might be the most.
Oh, I see.
But maybe I mis-heard fellow commissioners. That was just the only thing, reading through all the comments. It's like they lost part of their clubhouse for an office. Maybe, you know, take away lot 213 and make them put their office over there and give them back their clubhouse, all of it. I don't know. Those are just, I don't know where jurisdiction lies, but that's just some thoughts I was thinking.
Any other questions before we open this up for public comment? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Rebecca. And we'll open this up for public comment. And the first caller is Margine Dismet. If I said that right, pronounced that right?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay. Initial questions are involving, first of all, this parking issue, which is a big issue here. Losing that parking lot in front of the clubhouse, the existing clubhouse, means that when we have events at the clubhouse, if we ever were able to do that again, based on COVID, we don't have parking. We'll be parking up and down the streets instead of just directly across the street from the clubhouse. Plus, we lose overflow parking for some people who may have a second vehicle that cannot fit into their driveway. Some of the driveways in this park are so short, you can't fit a normal car into them. So that's an issue that needs to be dealt with. Parking on street, although allowed, would impede mail delivery. We have, if a mailman comes by and there's a car anywhere near the mailboxes, he won't deliver mail. So that's an issue. Second thing that I wanted to talk about was noise abatement on the 101 corridor. A cedar fence was put along that corridor, and it dealt with. It had to be changed after a while, because the noise level was too high still. And as I understand it, it still hasn't been filled in at the bottom. And the noise study that was done was did not measure noise on 101 during any rush hour, nor, as I understand, did it measure any noise within homes there. So that seems to be something that still needs to be addressed. The pervious pavement issue on the new road that's proposed to go from the main road of Ocean West into the new section on the western side. It's a pervious pavement, we were told, that's supposed to mitigate runoff, so it doesn't go into Widow White Creek. But it requires continuous maintenance and cleaning, vacuuming essentially, so that the pervious aspect of the pavement is not affected. If it's not done, then it becomes, things just run off. So one of the things I read in the staff report said that then, if that were the case, they would try, they would change the pavement so that, replacing the pavement either with new pervious pavement, I wasn't real clear on that, or asphalt, I presume. If it's either one of those, it's gonna run off. So those are kind of the three things in a nutshell that I've been dealing with in talks with the residents here in the park.
Would you like to address those, Rebecca? Director? Go ahead, Rebecca.
Yes. So for parking for the, for events during, for parking during events, I can see how the reduction of that large parking lot would affect events. And because this is a 55 and up park, more parking near the clubhouse may be needed if everyone cannot access it by walking throughout the park. But I do think that the parking spots on street are adequate. They meet ours standards for parking within a manufactured home park. The streets are wide enough, and we have a condition of approval that if mail delivery becomes impeded, the park management will have to work with the postmaster to either put in neighborhood box units, which are very common in a lot of suburban neighborhoods. I've seen them in McKinleyville near this project. So either put in neighborhood box units or have the mail delivery person deliver on foot, which is also a common method of mail delivery as well. So I think the mail delivery part has been adequately addressed. And the pervious pavement, we have received a lot of comments about the need for, or a lot of maintenance with pervious pavement. And there's a pervious pavement maintenance plan included that the park will have to follow as a condition of approval.
Sure. Chair Bonjio?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to make a point of order. Normally during public comment, we're not going back and forth. We're taking comment, and then if the commissioners want to answer or... or the staff, then we do it. So this slows it down quite a bit. So I'd like to see it keep flowing.
I agree with you, but we only have one hand up on the whole.
Is that it?
That's why I was letting her address it.
Okay, I can't see though, the one hand.
Oh, now the hands will probably start going up, but I just, there's only one hand up. So anyhow. So you want to finish, Rebecca? I'm not.
Sure. There was a noise study done that I believe is included in the staff report. They measured the decibels Cnl, which is the average throughout a given amount of time. And it was deemed to be acceptable to county standards. A typical construction house attenuates noise by 15 decibels. And I believe the, the maximum of acceptable Cnl is 45 in, in a house. And so with that fence, it does attenuate noise and attenuated noise to, to that level. But the resident is correct that there wasn't any, I don't believe there were any noise measurements taken inside of, of the homes in, in the expansion area because they are not built yet. But we found that the statistic study was met our standards.
Thank you.
Yes.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak on public comment? It's the same name. So, okay, seeing none. I'm gonna, oh, there's one more. Well, there was one more. Keeps appearing and then disappearing. So Hillary. Which is it? Going once? Hillary or Hillary, yes. Well, you keep coming and going, so try and. Now Kent, okay, go ahead Kent, maybe she'll come back. I don't know what's going on.
Yes, Swatsky, you know, I did try and check into this project and I don't know if that, can you hear me okay there?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't, you know, it's, it's a McKinleyville and I did try and check with some people who might know about it. They did raise some concerns regarding some environmental assessments that may not have been 100% correct. And that's just hearsay, you know, I don't have accurate thing that there, there, some Ts have not been crossed and Is dotted. I, I'm guessing maybe Hillary, I don't know, maybe that's Hillary Moser. I had a, had a back of a lot of the, the people who live in these trailer parks when they were being all sold out to people from out of the area. And, and a lot of them were afraid their rates were going to be raised and they, they, you know, had all kinds of fears of things coming in. And hopefully that hasn't come to fruition. On the other hand, anytime you have people doing major expansions like this, we, we really, I, I guess maybe it's not the normal thing to take into their, taking responsibility what kind of a people have been treated. Kind of like the end of the meeting here, and I'm, I'm guessing that some of them probably already gave up on this. But I, I do wish those concerns, you know, be shown. Anytime you have an expansion, you have more people in there, you have more traffic, you have more potential problems. And a lot of times these secondary areas that are being developed were not developed originally for a reason. And a lot of time it was because of environmental constraints. So if you guys are all satisfied personally, after checking into it a little bit and talking to people like I had, maybe those concerns maybe to be looked at a second time and addressed. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Kent, anybody else who wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment and bring it back to the commission. And Peggy O'Neil.
I, I have a recommendation. I don't even know if it's appropriate or, you know, you guys can tell me if it's not. But if the ownership is mixed and some of these parcels are still owned by the landowner, the park owner, a lot of them are older because I remember when this park first was developed. Could it not be put in there that if a, if one of them becomes available, because it is a senior park and seniors don't live forever, if the, if it's close to the, the building, that that unit may be demolished and turned into future parking in, down the road? So that, you know, maybe it's going to be in a few years, but that could be a condition that they open it up. I mean, they're going to lose a little bit of revenue, but the units are not new. They're pretty old. And so I don't think it would be a great loss. Can you put that type of suggestion in there or future recommendation?
I think that's one for you, Dr.
Yeah, I, I think that the first decision the commission needs to make is whether or not the recreational facilities and parking are adequate. If you determine that they're not, then we would start to explore how to address that, what's needed to address that. I, I just wouldn't immediately jump to taking away an existing entitlement, particularly one that's not involved in this particular action. So I, I think that's a bit of a stretch. If you're concerned about parking, I think that you really need to just identify that parking is an issue. And if you're uncomfortable enough to the point where you don't feel like this is approvable, then, then that should be articulated and we can work with the applicant to try to fix that.
Do they require the dog park? Is that required because of the, the necessary recreational area? Because the dog park could be another parking area close. I mean, there's no point in putting parking way out that's not close to the clubhouse if that's their concern. Is there a way that they can create recreation without a dog park? Is that something that the, the people there that wanted it? So they put it there or are they just throwing it in there because they need a recreational area? I mean, I support, I support this project and, you know, I want to make sure that the, the people that live there are accommodated, but we also need additional senior housing and, you know, so I support additional senior housing in the community.
There's a couple of things going on. One is they are trying to provide sufficient recreational amenities to meet the code. And, and so that's where those amenities are being placed. Originally, in the original CUP, that area was shown as being a recreational area. It was not shown as parking. And so it's really parking, unfortunately, because some of those original amenities weren't constructed. So this plan really addresses that.
Thomas, do you have your hand up?
Well, that just, that last thing the director said just changed up everything I was thinking kind of, because basically that was something that was supposed to be done as recreational area and then it just ended up turning into overflow parking. So it was a amenity that was noticed by the residents because it wasn't actually ever supposed to be a parking amenity. It's supposed to be a recreation amenity. The only thing I see and I'm, I think this is great because it's something our county needs. McKinleyville isn't really my neck of the woods. The only thing, just reading through it, I did the clubhouse recreational area taken away. I did notice that square foot and stuff like that. Basically, if other commissioners felt that they needed that recreational area given back in the clubhouse and there's, they can't meet the findings of enough parking and those kind of things, I, I see lot 213 would be the one to add those things to. But if the commission feels that it's good to move forward the way it is, I can support it that way too. I'm just throwing out the two things that I see and that's it.
Thanks. Mike, you have your.
Yes, thanks Chair. So looking at this a little bit more and, and understanding, you know, it was a gravel parking lot across from the recreation center, meant for recreation in the future. But my thought is because of the clubhouse being used, was it ever thought about or, or talked about that, that recreation area be over there where those three units are behind the Dollar General? Instead of those going for three units there? I, I mean, I know that we need more senior housing, more housing, period. I'm really aware of that. But to help make this a more livable park, the parking along the streets that are there right now would have to be well-defined on parking areas there. And of course, the mailboxes would need to be consolidated for sure because of the, the mail problem there, the mail delivery. That would make more sense to have the consolidation around the clubhouse anyway. But my main question is that three-space expansion over there, what was that before? And then why wasn't it considered for part of the recreation expansion?
I think, I, I can't really answer for the applicant what their thinking was, but I think that from staff's perspective, the desire was to have the recreation facility centrally located and really focused around Widow White Creek because that is a beautiful amenity that goes through the middle of the park. And so we had really talked to the applicant about expanding that amenity in terms of the, the walking trails and being able to have people have access there. In any conversation that I've been aware of, Rebecca or Cliff, if, if I, if you've had discussions about that northeast lot being used for recreation, please speak up. But I've, I've never heard it discussed for those purposes. You know, that's something that can certainly be considered.
Do we have the agents around for any talk?
I see they are online. They, the ones I'm aware of don't have their hands up right now.
Well, if the applicant is here, I'd welcome to speak up and maybe they have some thoughts on that. I just saw a hand come up on the attendant.
Yeah, I would say Art Neff is the, I believe, the manager or at least one of the project proponents, so you may call him to.
I'll let Art Neff speak, but I'm not opening up public comment again. I'm just letting the applicant speak.
Yes, my name is Art Neff. I'm with Atwell Engineering Group and our client is some communities. And, and we work with them to, we've been working with them to process this application. We have Erica Willer, our engineer, with us tonight and Jessica Hall with the Wilding Studio, who is our architect, landscape architect, who helped us design the facilities. And I think Jessica could probably speak to our improvements and, and how they came to be where we centralized them in the community.
If she's there, let her go ahead. Go ahead, Jessica.
Her hand is raised. Her name is Jessica Hall.
Go ahead, Jessica. I see it. I just, she's. Started, yep, there.
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Hi. Thanks for having us here tonight. You know, in, was it 2019? I think it was actually, we're in 2021 now. It, maybe it was late in 2020. In August of 2020, we did a brochure survey where we compiled potential recreational amenities and sent them out to the community. They were distributed by the manager at the mobile home park. So we got the preferences and we had spaces where people could write in recreational activities. And so we got an understanding of what people wanted to see at the, at the facility. And a dog park ranked really high since that came up as a question. Trails, dog park, I believe picnic areas were all items, community garden. All of those things were items that were in our top five. And, and so that's what we really focused building the recreational master plan around. We did also see the gravel parking area. And the way it was described to me was that, you know, this was a kind of informal parking lot. And so it really made sense for the recreational amenities to all be centralized because of their proximity to the clubhouse and because it just makes it more accessible to more people by having it be centralized and not off in a corner. So that was, you know, the rationale for why it is where it is. And it was really important to us to also close the loop on the creek trail. And so extending that so that you have a full loop is, you know, a benefit to people who want to get a little more exercise. And then extending that and what we call the Cypress Walk or the Cypress Trail so that there's these fingers that go out into the new development and allow people to be connected throughout the development are important pieces of that.
Well, yeah, I do. In the letter from Hillary Moser, you know, for Ocean West, non-leaseholders, I was looking at the concern there about the parking and then the being taken by the recreation area and then said that, you know, street parking would be replacing those, those areas that are concentrated around the clubhouse. Before COVID in years past, did you take a look at how many times the clubhouse was used or multiple, you know, people there or gatherings and that sort of thing?
Are you asking me?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I did not. I believe that it may have been. Well, so I, so I came onto the project in August. So there were a few months prior to COVID. And I don't know how frequently used the clubhouse was. Perhaps your letter writer has had some knowledge of that, that she was sharing, that I didn't hear from anyone.
Well, she does say it was a very much needed aspect of the residence's ability to utilize the clubhouse for recreational purposes, having that parking area over there and, and for other group gatherings there. It wasn't specified about what and how many. So that's why I was asking if that was in your survey when you were looking at expansions.
No, we were really looking at new facilities, not revisiting the existing one.
What do you mean by new facilities versus existing?
Well, so before, you know, we have, it was really focused on recreation and the clubhouse is an existing facility. So my, I took that as a given. And what we were trying to do is establish what new recreational amenities to be added to that in, in the master plan.
So the parking is proposed to be spread out then for the seniors and, and their friends that are probably seniors, most of them, to park away from the clubhouse. Is that the way? And is it going to be designated on the street there for those parking spots that are in the?
There's two things. There are seven parking spots that are provided at the, what we're calling the Central Park. And one of them is an ADA accessible parking space. And then there is street parking that has been laid out. The civil site plan shows those parking spaces very clearly. There is a parking diagram that shows them throughout the entire development.
Right. I'm looking at those. That was shown. And they're pretty much spread out all over that park. It's not close to the clubhouse.
Right, that, that is street parking.
And that's supposed to take the place of this parking lot there. The only reason that this can expand is by having this parking lot expanded into recreational facilities. Is that correct?
You may, are you asking me that if we wanted to put parking lot spaces back at that Central Park area? Yes, it would encroach on proposed recreational activities.
And you would not be able to get this other proposed increase through? Because it doesn't have enough recreational space. Is that correct?
It would be challenging to find other places to make that up.
So that's why I was asking then, those other three spaces over there on the far side, I understand about Widow Creek being a, you know, a central point there, but possibly the dog park could be over that way or something to help have the square footage of your recreational facility requirement for this expansion.
Yeah, I, I see what you're suggesting. I, I would really want to hear from the owner on that. You know, we, we really saw a benefit to keeping the dog park in the center of the development. Not only, like I was saying, having things be centralized brings people together so that it just creates a more community environment. But it's also good to not have a dog park near other units. And so I would want to evaluate, you know, if you were asking us to consider relocating it to those three units. You know, we'd need to evaluate whether or not the sounds from the dogs activity would be near, you know, too close to other units.
Well, yes, I understand that. I just use that as a quick little example about the dog park. Maybe it could be some of the other recreational opportunities that you're presenting over here in this.
Yeah, I understand that. Thank you.
Is the owner of this project available just to answer any questions? James, okay, so James, can you answer any of these questions? All right, I'm just going to bring it back to the, the commission then.
Do I still have speaking ability? I would just add, you know, that by considering removing the three units, that that could impact the, you know, some of the economic analysis that went into selecting how many units to put in there. But I'm not the person to really speak to that issue. I don't, I'm not aware of that side of it.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to bring it back to the commission. Thomas, you've had your hand up, and then Melanie.
So what I was trying to, one of the things I was trying to point out before, I don't remember her name, was talking about page 71. It showed that recreational survey and dog park was number two on it. So originally reading through all these things, I saw the parking being taken away as a big concern. But then Director Ford straightened me out by saying, technically, that should have never been a parking lot because under the original conditional use permit, it was supposed to be a recreation area. So then I factor they are putting seven parking spots in that area. So I think it's, I think it's something we can deal with. I think it's a, it's a good plan and it's something our, our county needs. So if the commissioners feel that there's not enough parking, like I said, I'm okay with going after lot 213. But if not, I'm totally fine with approving it as it is. It's not my neck of the woods, as I've stated before, but I'm going to leave it there.
Thanks, Thomas. Melanie, go ahead.
Thank you. Through the chair, if I could make a suggestion and perhaps the, we could get some answers on this from Rebecca. But often the parking spots are, I wasn't able to find the size of them and the materials we were given. Maybe I missed them. But depending on the size of the spot, sometimes you can alter a few of them to create an extra couple of them for the smaller compact vehicles. And so I'm wondering if maybe we could do something like that, have a few of them reorganized so that there are more parking spots, understanding that some of them are for compact vehicles, which are more and more popular.
Noah, next.
Sorry. Yeah, I, we, we don't have Jessica Hall on the line anymore, do we? Because, and I'm not saying we should bring her, her back, but I, I just wanted to make sure that we got, I, I do want to say this. I want to go on the record and say, I, I really like this plan. I think it is a, a well-designed plan that offers a lot of recreational amenities that will be of, of value to everyone. So I don't want to get too hung up on the parking issue, especially because of what Thomas just pointed out, which was news to me, which was that while this had become parking, it was actually initially designated in the earlier permit to be recreation. So I do think that, that sways my thinking about this some. But the question I wanted to ask is, rather than, rather than me, you know, or, or fellow commissioners trying to sort of figure out which, which unit could be converted to a dog park or could otherwise be, I just wanted to go back to the project designers and say, look, you know, we understand you need to provide a certain amount of recreation area, but given the concerns about parking, was there an alternative that you've considered or that you have in your back pocket that maybe could give a little bit more central parking back and still meet the overall balance of needs that you're trying to meet? I mean, I guess that's what I'm, and, and they, you know, it may be that that's just wishing for, you know, more than, you know, they've already done the best they could with that balancing. But I just wanted to hear if there was an alternative they considered that could have had more parking still available near the clubhouse and yet could still meet the otherwise balanced demands of the project. So.
All right. I'm willing to go back one more time and ask, but we're not going to just keep going back and forth. And I think we either approve the thing the way it is or we say, we're not going to approve it as a, a body and say, come back with an alternative because the parking's a problem. I mean, that's my, we either accept what they've shown us or not. But let's, I'm going to open it up and see if she's still available. So Jessica, if you'd like to comment on what you've heard, if you have anything to add.
Uh, yeah, you know, we did look at a maintenance area, but ruled it out because it is needed for maintenance purposes. And so, you know, we really did focus in on this area that we're all discussing right now.
Erica Willer is raising her hand and she's the engineer for the project.
I'll let Erica speak. Go ahead, Erica.
Hello. Hi, can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Hi. So I went out and I did the kind of parking study to show that there was adequate parking. And so what you're seeing on that parking map is actually extremely conservative. I was very, very conservative. And so where you might see just two parking spaces, in reality, you could probably fit three cars. So that map wasn't intended to show every single parking space. It was intended to show that, yes, we're meeting the code requirements and not just meeting it, but exceeding it. So I hope that, so when you're looking at those parking spaces, that is kind of a, not a maximum, but a minimum, if that makes sense.
Ah, thank you.
Yeah, that's helpful and that's, that makes me feel a bit better as well. Thanks.
Any other questions while we have Erica or Jessica there?
No.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mike.
Are, are those parking spaces that are outlined there on the street meant, are they going to be marked?
That is not something I have on our plans. So I'm the civil engineer for the expansion, not for doing anything within the existing facility. That would be up to the owner to do outside of my scope of work. So that'd be up to them to answer and address.
Is that something that had been thought about by staff or requirements here on this project? Because I just see a bunch of, if that is approved and, and they're not clearly marked, that you're going to have a problem with the street there. Because I see on those, those markings there, they're not right together. They're not one after another, after another, after another on the street. Is that because of driveways and such? Or it, it's not clear on the map here?
Yeah, so those, they're not right next to each other because there are driveways in the way. And I actually went out with a tape measure and kind of measured. And like I said, I was very conservative. I would suggest if you're asking the owner to mark them, to just maybe put no parking signs on one side of the street. It'd be really hard to go and mark off every parking space. I mean, I think it's kind of a given not to park in front of somebody's driveway.
I like this project, but I have a problem with the parking and the proximity to the clubhouse, which seems to be part of the, the people that live there, part of their problem. They'd like to see not all the parking taken away. Is that something I'm asking staff now that can be added in on the approval? You know, marking one side, no, non-parking and having those, those areas designated?
So when it comes to the, the parking throughout the lot, that's, that's really easy to condition. A condition could identify that parking shall be allowed on one side of the street. The other side of the street shall be marked with no parking. And if, at your discretion, you could add that parking spaces shall be marked on the street in the most efficient manner possible to maximize on-street parking.
Okay, thank you. I like that.
All right, I'm going to bring this back to the commissioners. Melanie, your hand is up or is it just still up?
Still up.
How about you, Thomas?
Um, I was putting up because I was going to make a motion to approve this product, project with that added condition of approval language the director specified of no parking on one side and then the parking marked, clearly marked on the other side. Trying to find the exact language because then, alright. So that would be my motion. I just lost my page because I got distracted. My son said he's turning my computer off at 10 o'clock.
Well, I'm going to turn it off for him.
I'll second the motion.
Page four, page four, Thomas.
And I seconded Thomas's motion.
Okay.
I drive by that park all the time and I don't see a lot of traffic congestion in there, by the way. I mean, most seniors would probably like to have people come visit them, but it's not that congested looking.
I need to specify all the staff recommendation, the secret guidelines, it's on page four. Okay. We're doing that.
You're recommending staff's recommendation with the addition of the condition.
Perfect.
We'll probably make more people mad by telling them they can only park on one side of the street than taking away their gravel parking lots. But that's what you want to do.
Yep, because otherwise it's willy-nilly and you'll have a lot of problems. So, yes, I'll, did somebody second Thomas's?
Yeah.
I did.
All right.
Okay, so we have a motion seconded. Any further discussion? All right, so Laura, roll call vote, please.
Melanie McCaver?
Yes.
Alan Bonjio?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Thank you, Laura. Motion carries unanimous. Okay, so we're at 9:46. We're not even going to, we want to get through the staff report on the next one. So I'm going to say that we need to make a motion to continue these to the, I'm assuming the next meeting to January 6th. So let's just go through, make sure we get the ones right. So it's going to be item number two, item three, and then.
Also, number four, the green hatch.
Yes. Then.
So can I get a motion to continue these to the January 6th, you said, right?
So moved.
What, what about the rest of those? Like three, um, three, five, six?
Those were already continued to the January 6th, right?
Just making sure.
All right, so we have a motion to continue those items to the January 6th. Did somebody second it? I didn't hear it. If they did.
I'll second.
Thanks, Mike. So then we have a motion seconded. Any further discussion? All right, Laura, roll call vote, please.
Peggy O'Neil?
Peggy?
She's muted.
I don't see her up anymore.
No, she's, she's there. She's just.
Alan Bonjio?
Uh, yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Melanie McCaver?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Laura. Motion carries unanimous. So that, is there anything else you want to address, Director, or any of the commissioners?
I would like to bring one thing up. Today at the Zoni Administrator Meeting, it was, or before the meeting was brought up to me that there are members of the public who don't believe the Zoni Administrator should be acting on larger cannabis projects. And I mean, it's not the intent of the Zoni Administrator to not have full public disclosure, not have transparency. But if the public would rather see the Planning Commission act on these, what we're going to do is just, rather than having a Zoni Administrator meeting for cannabis that involve cannabis, everything's going to come to the Planning Commission. So that will more than double your workload.
Make this a choice.
The Planning Director does because there's really been a lack of confidence in what we're doing. And we're being accused of doing things we shouldn't be doing. And, and so we want to be completely and totally transparent.
I'd like to speak on this. It's no different than what happened at the supervisors Tuesday and, and with Commissioner McCaver. A few people called in and said something and everybody says we've got to have an inquiry about it. And it's ridiculous, just like this, just a few of the same people all the time. I don't, I think you should ask direction from the supervisors as to if they want you to keep doing it. I mean, if, if they say no, that they're your bosses. But I mean, I think you're presented that guy, John, and I think that you can do the job. So I think if, you've said there's some that you've decided to send us because you felt that it needed more than what you could do. So I, I just can't see why that should be taken away. I've heard them say they want, you know, to have employees. So maybe we can do that. That'll make them happy with the meetings. I don't know. I'm just, this giving in all the time seems to, to be troubling. There it is for me.
I, I agree with you, Chair. I agree with you.
I, I agree also, and I'm wondering, wasn't the whole point of doing a programmatic environmental impact report such that we would have things that would be ministerial if they met the guidelines and regulations?
Zoning administrator is not ministerial. It is discretionary. Um, but you are right. The things that the, uh, uh, two point O ordinance did was it allowed approval of up to an acre with a special permit. Special permits are normally done administratively, not even at a hearing. We take a more conservative approach and hold hearings at the zoning administrator. But evidently that's not transparent enough. Um, and then like one was on there today that was, uh, what we call stacking of, um, RRRs. Those are normally ministerial. We recently adopted, uh, ordinance that required when there are two or more that are being stacked, that they, um, require a special permit, which is discretionary, but normally administrative. We hold a public hearing for those. That's one of them that will be coming forward to the planning commission.
So I'm, I'm sorry to blurt out here, Chair, but.
That's okay. Go ahead.
There's, there's just, um, hearsay. It's just speculative hearsay that, you know, there's a good way to slow down the process and slow down the train is just keep commenting. So it's very unfortunate, very, very frustrating. Um, that's about all I can say. I, I really can't wait to like see you in person and share some of this stuff from like the housing type stuff that I'm hearing about this, uh, HOA that I'm visiting. So it's like, holy cow. Whole nother world. It'd be cool to talk about stuff like that instead of holding up, uh, ministerial cannabis permits. So that's it.
Great. Thanks, Thomas. Um, so what are you asking of us?
I'm, I'm just telling you. Um, I'm not asking anything. I'm just letting you know.
I, I don't think we have any authority to give you any permission to do anything, but it just seems like.
It is discretion of the zoning administrator to do that.
I, well, I think that you can keep doing it. This is my, my thought on it. I, I mean, I think.
If, if the commissioner wants to tell me they don't want to see those, that's an entirely different matter. But the thing that you're going to hear is that the zoning administrator is acting on things that the zoning administrator shouldn't be acting on.
Is there something you could pinpoint in particular that most of the complaints arise from, from these ministerial? That, that where you could just maybe select a, a, you know, a few of them out or something like that?
It's primarily size. I mean, we can limit it to things that are an acre or more.
Wouldn't you think that that would, I hate to use the word appease, those, those question, everything. Uh, but you think if you were doing.
We'll start there.
That's a, seems like a reasonable.
Hmm.
Adjustment, I guess. See where we go. Can't make everybody happy. It doesn't matter what you do. I, I, I've learned that in life and we all have, but.
Well, I'm definitely more comfortable with, um, if I understand what Director Ford is saying, with retaining the, the zoning administrator function and just sending the larger than an acre projects by default to us. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
And I would just, I'm sorry, Noah, and I would assume if you've, if there was something else that came up in one, like you've told us there's ones that you would have did, but you felt because of some, you know, aspect of it, that it should come to us. So I would just assume that if, you know, if you're getting a lot of pushback on one, then send it to us. Take the heat off yourself and, and, you know, move it, move with the ones that you can. I mean.
That's what I suggest. If, if something comes up in there and, and it's not resolvable, then it gets referred up to us. But if not, you just continue your business as it is. We can't even keep up with what we've already got, you know? We keep pushing people back and pushing them back. And now they're complaining that they're going to have to do more things and they're all losing money. And, you know, we need to keep going. And if one comes there and it's not going right, then say, well, then we can send it on up. But if not, keep doing your job.
Any more direction than that? I think, I think he's got our, our idea. All right. Well, with that, um, unless anybody else has anything to say, I just want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas. Um, I want to thank all of you for having faith in me as your chair and voting me back. Um, I like being the chair, but I most of all like knowing that you guys trust me and, uh, it means a lot. So thank you.
All have a Christmas. Coming right up.
Yeah. Merry Christmas. Happy New Year.
See you next year.